Yes, I do. You thought I forgot, didn't you?
Wow.
Thank you. Appreciate that. We're ready. You getting the signal from Cheryl? Need help?
Morning. Welcome to January 20th Board of Commissioner meetings here in Curry County. If you would please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have any changes to the, uh, to the agenda? Amendments?
Um, first of all, under the consent agenda, we would like to add another order for the juvenile department. Basically, um, we need a transfer order to fill the position. They submitted all the paperwork, but it actually takes a transfer order to move one employee from one department to another.
Okay, so we'll do that as J on the consent agenda?
Okay, and then we also have a higher order, rehire order for our building safety division. That is for Hank Eckhart. A personal action form was signed last week to hire him, and it wasn't known at that time that it actually took an order, so I do have an order to add to the agenda under there as well.
Okay, we'll do that as K on the consent agenda.
And then to mess up your numbering there, um, for the assessor items, which is H and I.
We're gonna pull those.
We're gonna pull those because LGPI did not review the, did not have time to, um, agree to the salary range on that. And for G, appointment of Michael Ling to Planning Commission for South County, that one we're gonna pull as well because the planning director had not seen that earlier, and she had some comments on that, so we're gonna take, we're gonna s- we also have some questions on, on what to do with the planning commission as we move forward, whether or not it should be combined with our citizen involvement committee or some other matters. So we're gonna pull that one as well.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, if I may. Twenty-seventh meeting, I'd like to request the board approve, I don't know if we need, this needs to be an action item or just consensus, to have the meeting at three o'clock on Wednesday, the twenty-seventh. New Rogar Verciski National Force Supervisor, Merv George, will be in town. He'd like to make a quick, I've asked him if he would consider making a quick presentation. He also will introduce some of his staff, new Gold Beach Ranger District, who I've met with a couple of times, and, uh, better days ahead, so.
So are you talking the workshop, March twenty-seventh or May twenty-seventh?
He will be available from about two-thirty on, so, I don't know. We, we still have a regular meeting scheduled, I believe.
Is that February twenty-seventh?
Yes.
Next week?
That's correct.
And that is scheduled in the evening, wasn't it?
Right, so February twenty-seventh, we actually have a meeting scheduled, um, for the evening, and then we also have a workshop scheduled. My understanding is you're not going to be here, Commissioner Pash?
Well, I, I can be here on the twenty-seventh if we do it, um... One second, let me check my calendar. I just wanna make sure on my calendar. I can, I can do the meeting on the twenty-seventh if it's late in the afternoon.
Mr. Chair, I didn't know we had a workshop scheduled, or I had forgot. So, how could we put that together so that we could take advantage of his time and the workshop we already have scheduled? And your schedule?
Where's the meeting at? It wasn't here, was it?
Um, originally it would have been in Brookings this month, but because of the late scheduling, we decided to keep it here.
Okay, so could we do a workshop at, say, three o'clock and a meeting at five?
We could.
So, um, how long do we expect the workshop possibly to go?
We don't have a lot of items for the workshop. We do, however, have that we would do our first department report at that meeting, and that would be presented by the assessor's office if we decide to continue with that schedule.
We're gonna have a workshop, figure out the workshop.
No, why don't we just go with the workshop at two o'clock and then he can do his presentation at three?
That would be great, and then he's gonna have, he's invited to another meeting with, uh, different citizens, um, downstairs about five in the blue room. So I think we can make that work, maybe four.
No, we can't, we got a board meeting at five.
I don't wanna miss that, either one.
Just so you know, though, I won't be able to make the workshop till about three o'clock.
But he's not here for workshop, he's here for the regular board meeting, so he can present to the whole county if we could give him that, uh, capacity to, to offer.
That would be five o'clock, though.
Okay, we'll make that work and then we'll have a, okay.
So can we do the workshop at three, then, instead of two?
We could.
Okay.
All right.
We're on, we're on target, huh?
All right.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, any other amendments? Okay, can I get a, uh, a motion?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, thank you, just, um, I think executive session is actually on the agenda, and it would be for, um, one ninety-two six-six-oh-sub-two-sub-B, to consider, uh, discipline of an employee who doesn't request an open hearing, and also one ninety-two six-six-oh-two, I believe it's H and K, which is to consider information exempt from disclosure, which is, uh, legal attorney-client privileged information. So, that would be later, um, probably later in the afternoon, closer to two or so.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I, I believe we have a two o'clock meeting, something scheduled today in this room.
JJ? Is there a two o'clock scheduled in this room today?
No. Oh, oh, yes, there is, there is, uh, Becky Crockett. The building, um, the planning director, Becky Crockett, has meetings scheduled at two PM in this room.
Okay, well, maybe we'll try it at one, if we can get it at one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, we've had a few things come off, so might be able to get through things quicker.
Very good, all right.
Also, in my failures, while we're on this, uh, so can I get a second to the motion?
I'll second that. That's amended with the executive session, right?
Yes. A roll?
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Chair Pash?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, we didn't do a, uh, we didn't do a roll call this morning, so, uh, Director of Operations Julie Schmelzer is also in the room as is Council Huddle, and, uh, JJ is our main man here. I'm sorry, I forgot to, uh, we just spoke about it and I forgot to do it, can you give us a report on the police?
Excuse me, thank you, Mr. Chair. Two thousand nineteen Honorable Role of Heroes Law Enforcement Report. Uh, so far, for almost the two months of two thousand nineteen, we've lost eighteen officers. If we average nine per month, that would be a hundred and eight for two thousand nineteen, which is a hundred and eight, of course, too many, but the two thousand eighteen total deaths for law enforcement officers in line of duty was one hundred and fifty. So, uh, if I may, Mr. Chair, ask for a moment of silence, and we're hoping that we can keep these numbers very, very low throughout America, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna start on public comments. We're gonna start first with Mary Rowe. Morning, Ms. Rowe.
Thank you. Good morning. I am Mary Rowe, and I am here to comment on a consumption or sales tax. First, I would like to say, given the expensive ballot measures, according to our county clerk, our last election cost about twenty-five thousand dollars. We need to craft a consumption tax that will pass the first time around if we are even to have such a tax. If we do, would it be possible to have a committee to determine exemptions? If so, it is important that an effort is made to include people who are senior citizens, disabled, low income, and working poor. It is also important to include a social worker who has expertise in analyzing the effects of any tax on various members of the community and on the community as a whole. I am offering to serve on any such committee. There are many advantages to keeping a sales tax simple in terms of what it taxes. It would be easier to set up an administer, and consumers could better understand how it works. I would ask you to please keep in mind that many low-income people are on the edge of not being able to survive and are living without necessities. So, taxing discretionary items rather than necessities is necessary to ensure the survival of all of our people. Taxing luxury items such as alcohol, cigarettes, coffee, candy, jewelry, decorations, et cetera, would address this issue, and/or taxing restaurant meals. Taxing necessities such as hygiene products, cleaning supplies, pet supplies, medicine, and medical treatments and supplies, sources of heat and shelter should not occur. Taxing grocery store items would hurt our food banks by decreasing the amount of food that people could afford to donate, and also increasing the amount of food that people would need from our food banks. Finally, with respect to sales tax, the poor pay more. What this means is that lower-income people pay a larger percentage of their income, incomes for items that are subject to such a tax. This fact is based on plenty of research. So, sales taxes are discriminatory to poor people unless we in Curry County care enough to craft a sales tax that does not tax necessities. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will say that I've always been a voice that has said that I don't wanna burden the taxpayers of this county that have invested their money in property and businesses in this county solely. I think everyone needs to pay a, everyone that uses the resources of the county should pay the taxes fairly, so we need to find a way that everyone that uses this county, including our, our visitors, all help contribute to the tax base of the county. All right, um, we're gonna go to Patricia Anderson. Morning, Ms. Anderson.
Morning. I have a handout for all of you, may I give that to you?
Yes, you may.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I preface my comm- my concern, excuse me, by saying that I know that in the county it is legal to shoot a gun, as well as something called Tannerite, which when hit by a bullet sounds like a bomb exploding. My concern is my service dog Hank. Every time Mr. Dave Elverood at twenty-eight-three-fourteen Emerald Drive shoots his gun, my service dog Hank starts to shake. I am trying to help Hank cope with the gunshots to minimize the effect on him, but when Mr. Elverood shoots at the Tannerite, my dog shakes uncontrollably. About two weeks ago, Mr. Elverood was shooting and shot at the Tannerite. When Hank heard that, he shook controllably for over one and a half hours, and that's not an exaggeration, that is literally him shaking, his whole body was shaking. If I needed Hank to assist me during that time, he would have been totally useless to me because he couldn't function. I am not the only one affected by this. My neighbor, Joe Friesen, and her daughter, her husband and dog, are also affected by the shooting, as is Mrs. Don Robiskie, who has her eighty-two-year-old mother living with her, and there's a note from Mr. and Mrs. Robiskie attached to my note. I have spoken to Mrs. Elverood, whom I might add was not sympathetic about my concerns, and only said they have a right to shoot guns in the county, including shooting at Tannerite. At First Corinthians ten-twenty-three and twenty-four, it states, "All things are lawful, but not all things are advantageous." "All things are lawful, but not all things build up. Let each one keep seeking not his own advantage, but that of the other person." Mr. Elverood is seeking his own advantage and is not concerned with, nor is he thinking about the effects this has on his neighbors or his relationship with them. It is my hope that the commission will change the ordinance that allows for the shooting of Tannerite in the county, perhaps stipulating that shooting at Tannerite has to be done somewhere other than in an area where people live, such as my neighborhood. It is also my hope that Mr. Elverood would be willing to work something out with his neighbors in regards to the time that he shoots a gun. I have been told by others that even at ten o'clock at night, he'll be out in his yard shooting his gun. Until then, I will continue to follow the sheriff's dispatcher suggestion and call two, the two-four-seven-three-two-four-three number every time Mr. Elverood is shooting his gun. They told me to call when he is shooting. So, thank you for your time, and I appreciate being able to present this for you, before you.
I have a question for you, has, has anyone, a group of neighbors ever gone up to, to Mr. Elverood and knocked on his door and said, you know, "This is terrorizing our animals, is there any way we could do this in a more reasonable fashion?"
Uh, not, not as a group, um...
Would you have that courage?
The Friesens are here, they have talked, and... He said he can do whatever he wants, and he has twenty-four acres there, and he shoots right where the street, where our house is right across the street.
I think, yeah. You need to come and identify yourself, please.
I'm Barbara Whedon, and that's my mom, um, Joe Friesen, and we all live together in the same house. She lives right above us. I have a dog, who is a rescue dog, who shakes for hours when the Tannerite is shot. I myself, it's very disturbing to me, the, the, um, it does, it sounds like a bomb going off. And though it may be legal, it, it's not, it's just not right to allow it right there within a certain, there should be a distance limit for how close to another house or human being he can shoot that stuff.
I'm not sure that there's not on that.
And we've talked to him, and he says, he says, "Well, I can do whatever I want on my property," and I said, "But Dave, don't you care about your neighbors and want them..." "Well, I can do whatever I want, it's my property and I can do whatever I want." That's his attitude.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think maybe we need to take a serious look at an ordinance, because that's not, that's the very small percentage of gun owners that are irresponsible, and if nothing else, break, breaking the peace or disturbing the peace is not lawful. Whether he has twenty-four acres or, uh, a half of a square acre, it's not good business. Guns are for self-defense, and, uh, boy, I wouldn't, I don't know if I'd have the courage to walk up to his door and, you know...
Do we know, do, do we know offhand what the setbacks are? Uh, can, or can we get the sheriff's department to find out what the setbacks are? For discharging a weapon, um, on property, you know, when you've got another house that's next door?
Where?
Perhaps we can look at what the setbacks are for that? Yeah, we'll look into it.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate you hearing me out.
Ms. Labonte?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Really early for me. I'm going to read a statement and ask for a response from you. Um, Commissioners, the League of Women Voters of Curry County has taken a position in support of the county's transient logic tax ballot measure based on the following positions. The League of Women Voters of Curry County supports that alternative sources of funding should be explored for county government. The League of Women Voters supports a tax system that recognizes the individual's responsibility for government services by providing a broad sharing of the tax burden. We do recognize that tourists put a certain burden on county government services and facilities, and therefore should share in the tax burden to provide these services. The League has heard concerns the county commissioners may not abide by the distribution of funding provided by the taxes outlined in the ballot measure. Certain percentages are in line with state statutes and cannot be changed. However, we would like the sitting board of Commissioners to commit to not changing the distribution that is voted on to assure the trust in the county commissioner on this issue. And I purposely said sitting commissions because we know you can't commit another board, a future board of Commissioners, but we feel that in order to pass this tax, we need to hear that the county commissioners are not going to change what's on the ballot, the formula. So, we really would like to hear a commitment from you. Thank you.
Well, I've already spoken with you, and I think, uh, in my conversation with you, I have said that what was written into the ballot for this commission should be upheld. Um, we've already guaranteed that, I believe, to the fair board and, uh, to the police, uh, sheriff's department, and as well as the tourism, so, as far as I'm concerned, I'm willing to commit to that.
I would commit to that also.
I'm not gonna make a promise, 'cause I don't know what the future is. I think very, it would be very unlikely for me not to support that, but until...
Well, Commissioner Boyce, you were one of the ones named that, that people are concerned that you're gonna try to change that formula, and, um, they, they're very leery about voting on anything that the commissioners might use, as I will use a quote from nineteen-eighty-nine or ninety, slush fund. That's what happened when the commissioners tried to put away O and C money for the future. A lot of people don't think they wanted to do that, they did. That's when they started the road fund for the future, um, and they were basically told it would be used as a slush fund, so people did not want them to do that. And that's kind of, we wanna make sure that that air is cleared on this, that you're gonna commit to what's in that ballot measure, because people aren't gonna wanna vote on one thing and have you change it. And I know that at least two of you ran on, um, the... What's the word I'm looking for? You ran for office saying that you didn't want a county manager because people had voted against that. And so you did come in and change that, which was fine, that's what you decided to do. So it's kind of the same thing, if people vote for one thing, we wanna make sure that that's what is fulfilled. And as I said, a future sitting board cannot, you cannot commit for them, we know that by law, but we would like to see this sitting board of Commissioners at least give that TLT, the remaining two years of your time in office as this board, um, to fulfill it the way the people vote on it. So that's, that's...
Thank you, if I, if I may, as a, as a former commissioner, you know the responsibility that goes with that, and the trust that the people try and put into our time as a public official, as an elected person. I'm just not willing, if you, if there's concern out there that I'm somehow going to, in some clandestine way, try and figure out a way to maneuver funds, I just don't know what the future is. You mentioned a minute ago that the League supports the research in alternative revenue sources for this county. That's music to my ears, that's, uh, that's the toughest battle that we have here. So, not knowing what the future's gonna bring for this little county, and having our forests burned up and no timber receipts coming in, no option to raise property taxes, in my opinion, not even a consideration, we're faced with some incredibly tough sources, or some incredibly tough choices, and as you said, the TLT percentages are pretty well locked in. So, as I started to say there, unlikely I would change, or try to change, or persuade the board on amending that percentage, but I appreciate very much, and as you've been a commissioner eight, eight years, know, even in those days, the funding challenges.
Well, that's right, we always uphold the vote of the people, though, when I was a commissioner, so...
Well, and one more thing is...
So I will say that, it looks like the majority of the board won't wanna change that formula, so I feel a little more comfortable with it, um, and I'm sure the League will feel really good about that. So I, it's just, it's just upholding the vote of the people, it's very important.
Thank you very much, and you also mentioned the future board binding another board. Previous board did bind this board on a severance package, as you well know.
Well, that's, that technically, your, your attorney will tell you that was not a legal move, so...
Thank you for letting me respond, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
David Barnes? Okay. Think that's the way the rest of these are. All right, for presentations, uh, Gold Beach, Brookings, Food Banks, and Beyond Rejection Ministries, Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you. Could we have, uh, Lila Thorpe come up, please? The last two or three nights with the amount of need in, uh, in her assisting people, uh, she has not got a lot of sleep, so I'm just very glad to have her and, and Jim Johnson here to, uh, represent Gold Beach and the incredible efforts you're making. Thank you, Lila.
Well, I'm here, by your request, to, uh, just let the folks know what is going on. And I did give a handout to, uh, Mr. Boyce, um, that you can each see. We have a wonderful food bank, and have had for a number of years here on Gold Beach at the Third Street Sunday Adventist Church. It is a community food bank, though, because the amount of donations that come in are from the community. We have, as you can see, it goes up and down as far as, um, volunteers, the hours that are put in, the households that come, um, the people that come. I cannot give you an exact count of the homeless because a lot of times people just write down Gold Beach or Wetterburn. Our soup kitchen that we have every Tuesday night, and now since we've been having such cold weather and stormy weather, I have been opening up, um, so they could come in as a warming center. I have a movie that I show, I feed them dinner, I feed them breakfast before they leave. And, um, I'm open from six until about seven-thirty in the morning. And, uh, I'm hoping that one day we're going to have a, a center here that can be run for the homeless. I'd, I'd even be very happy to, to work with whoever did it, a home, though, that they, not that they can live in, but they can come in as a shelter from the storms, from, and then leave in the morning. And, uh, right now, we're doing it as a service, a Christian service, and, um, I'm calling it a warming center. I can't really call it a shelter because it's not equipped to be a shelter and to keep people there. But, um, I do want the, the town to know that there is this available, and, um, any donations or help is always appreciated. And this isn't something that goes to the church, this is a separate thing. The food bank is a separate thing, the soup kitchen is a separate thing, and now the warming center is a separate thing. And, um, it, um, is something that is, is just going to be done, you know, as to how the money comes in, so...
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Lila, you mentioned donations, so, and also a quick question, I know puts a lot of pressure on your church there. I assume you don't have enough volunteers either, generally?
Um, I have, um, a lot of volunteers, uh, they come from many, um, other churches as well. The Catholic Church has, uh, has really helped me immensely. Uh, some of our volunteers have died off, uh, some of them have moved, and, um, uh, so, there are times, and people need to get away. People are getting older, the ones that are, are doing the volunteering, and so, um, you know, they, um, they can't put in all the time, or medical reasons, they can't be there all the time. And, um, right now, I'm, I'm the only one that's represented through the church because I'm the community, um, service center. And I had to go to, well, I go to Portland every year for training on different things, and for disaster, through ADRA and all, so... But, um, if there's any other questions?
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Johnson.
Okay, we also have Connie Hunter and...
Nope, Jim Johnson's next.
Okay, I'm sorry. We've got it lined up, okay. Sorry.
Good morning.
Morning.
Jim Johnson. I wear a number of different hats and so I go down the litany. But Beyond Rejection Ministries is getting ready to go into its 35th birthday coming up in a few months. I was able to put it together prior to my mother passing away in 1987. So as far as back as 1984, 85, we were very well established addressing the epidemic of AIDS and creating housing for people that were stranded because of one reason or another, often ignorance during that period of time and became homeless or people living in the rough, as they say, under the other side of the planet. Jim Johnson, I think I got that in there. I forgot what else legally, but I'm right down the street at the old Curry Public Library. And we work very, very closely with anybody that really is addressing the issues of homelessness and impoverishment on whatever level that they're dealing with. I'm really happy today to have Chuck Dwyer here from the Catholic Men's Group. Catholic Men's Group, not only is Chuck and his wife big volunteers for the Third Street Food Bank, but they're also very involved as one of the arms that I lean on for transportation. We often have to get somebody out of Curry County and out of Gold Beach and send them as far away as the Midwest and/or Portland, south to the Bay Area and to various parts of California, all over the country. And the Catholic Men's Group helps me with a lot of that. Many people that get stranded on the streets or living in their cars and so on and so forth are able to be put up for a night, sometimes two or three nights, sometimes even a week. And many times, the dollars that put them into motels for temporary housing comes from the Catholic Men's Group. And if it was not for that arm, we would not be able to meet the need. There is actually a substantial need. We probably have approximately thirty, approximately three dozen people living in their vehicles that goes seven miles north, seven miles south, the Pistol River, seven miles out on the river, on the South Bank. There's at least in the campgrounds and so on and so forth and here on the streets, not currently here at the annex. The people that were sleeping down off and on the last year here at the annex at night were coming in about eight o'clock, leaving about 5:30 in the morning. Most of their phones were set with alarms. They've been asked not to use the annex here as a place, which I had been recommending for a long time. But anyway, it's my understanding that no one's using it at least this week. So I also wear the hat of the Homeless Coalition, which is now across the street in our neighboring building where Mental Health was. The Homeless Coalition is trying to address other housing issues. And so those can be, when the time comes, be addressed by myself and/or preferably one of the executive members of the Homeless Coalition, probably Beth Hildago would be the best to speak for the sake of the Homeless Coalition. We do a lot of other things so far this winter. I think we've passed out at least two, two and a half dozen brand new sleeping bags. We were blessed this year to be able to obtain five degrees Celsius, 15 degree Fahrenheit sleeping bags. And we were able to send people all over the state and south because of the generosity of the people who helped finance all that. And when the food bank is closed and when the soup kitchens closed and not available and so on and so forth, people come to the front door of the old library and can get food during the course of the rest of the week. And we'll leave it at that. I don't want to talk any longer. I didn't intend to talk this long, but if there's any questions that I can answer for anybody, I'd be loved to.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Johnson, you mentioned the Catholic Men's Ministry supporting you financially and the efforts, but I also know you've put money many times out of your own pocket. And if I may, not to embarrass you, but that store that you have at the old Gold Beach Curry Public Library has got to be one of the most fascinating, I don't want to say just antique shop, but it's just maybe on the entire Oregon coast. So I'm just going to put in a little plug there because again, I know a good portion of that goes to helping people come through the community and you're just greatly appreciated.
Yeah, very welcome. You know, my brother had passed away, in a couple of weeks, it'll be 10 years. And one of the last things that he asked me to do was to liquidate the family assets, to put it into the charitable works that the family was involved with. My mother's father, grandfather and great-grandfather, my great-great-grandfather were all very, very instrumental in Joplin, Missouri and other places in the Midwest where their farms were and so on and so forth. And that's what they did was they tried to build, and they worked with employment. They also tried to create jobs. That was a big thing to mom, was creating jobs for people. And on that note, I want to mention, this last year, the average person, homeless person or transient traveler coming through has been males in their 30s and they're not drug users and they're not alcoholics. They are just simply coming here, they want to work. And a lot of them are veterans and they are coming from other parts of the country. And they want, we've got last night, at least three current ones going through town. They'll be gone within the next probably 48, 72 hours because they're going to head north looking for more work. But I just want to mention those because it's become the more common homeless person that comes and/or traveler that comes through Curry.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Connie Hunter, Pam Weinberger. One of you has to go first. Ms. Weinberger, you might want to, that mic on the right, you might want to tug that down just a little bit. Thank you very much.
First of all, thank you for having us. Commissioner Pash, Commissioner Boyce, Commissioner Gold, and of course Director Julie. It means the world for us to feel like our work is respected and appreciated besides needed. So I'm going to hand out a few things real quick that'll help me go through my presentation. And I want to make sure that everybody knows this is Pam Weinberger. She's our executive director from Brookings Harbors Community Helpers Food Bank and a total asset to our community.
Are you a soft-spoken one?
Not really. I just...
No, she's not afraid of much.
They had to twist my arm to get here today because I am one busy person, but that's just the way it goes.
And we have to say thank you to our local media for helping us to get the information out. So if it wasn't for some of the front page stories that are in the pilot and other media like the radio stations, Curry, KCRE and KPOD, some of the crises that we've had to deal with wouldn't have come to the forefront and people wouldn't have been able to come forward and be as generous as they are. For example, the recent shutdown of the government, we had an influx and an increase of people using the food banks because of delayed paychecks. We also made sure that we got the information out on behalf of Elk's Lodge and their efforts to make sure that our local Coast Guard had food and income. They provided, the public was asked to provide cards so that they could have, go right down to Freddy's and use those gift cards. So the food bank, even though we are feeding a huge, incredible amount of people, and you'll see that in the statistical information, the white sheet that says Food Bank Statistics 2018, you'll have a pretty good idea of what we do and I'll go through some of those real quick. But we do other things. We make sure that every once in a while, if there's a cold snap, we stepped up and helped with getting sleeping bags and warm clothes one year. When the Cheko Bar fire happened, we all know the heroes and sheros of the food bank that were breathing that smoke and unloading and reloading and packing hundreds of thousands of pounds of food and going from feeding 200 people a day to closer to 2,500 people a day sometimes. But the point is, we somehow rise to the occasion. And the only way that we can do it is through partnerships, through our community coming forward and being generous, the hard work and increased skills, not only of our Board but of our staff members, has helped us be more capable in our fundraising and that's the only way we can meet the needs. So having us here today, if one person hears about the need of our food bank and our need for volunteers and Board members and comes forward, we will have hit a home run. So I appreciate the public awareness opportunity today. In 2018, 83 food boxes per week on average. Now those food boxes, when they're given out, they're not given generally just to one person, it goes to families. And families can be all shapes, sizes, as you know. So 83 boxes of food per week could be feeding, you know, six times 83 people. So we don't have a total number of people that we serve with the food boxes, but we do have a huge annual total of over 4,000 food boxes just in 2019. Of course, we supplement that with our daily counter, which in 2018, over 11,000 people were served daily counter meals. And a lot of times, those are our veterans and our seniors and they come in for that daily amount of food. And then when we're talking about feeding people, the hearts of gold that have already spoken and the people that will speak and our hearts, we reach out to our young people too. We realize that we have to make sure our young people in school have supplemental food program and we call that the snack pack program. We've increased the size of that snack pack program significantly. It'll be even larger in 2019, but in 2018, we served over 8,400 snack packs. But those snack packs don't feed one student. We make sure that there's enough in those snack packs. If they go home and they have siblings, those siblings get fed too. We've been able to, over the last three years, continually gradually increase our fundraising capabilities. You'll see on the back of that blue handout that I gave you, it'll say the Brookings City Council presentation. Well, we didn't change the title, we forgot to. We were having our meeting in preparation of this and we had two new clients come in in the middle of our meeting. So we stopped our meeting, Pam would work with the client, then we go back to our meeting and then the last person that came in, and not to interrupt our meeting, but you know, we navigated, was a veteran coming in for the first time to receive services from the food bank. So please pretend that says the...
You're forgiven.
Curry County Food Bank. You can forgive us.
It's all one big family.
Thank you, Commissioner Pash. But our budget for, our budget goals for fiscal year 2019 are lofty because it includes a capital campaign. We're talking about $345,000 that we're hoping to raise. We're going to have to cover our expenses, which are estimated at about $153,000. And so that is in our fundraising goal to cover that expense. And then our $30,000 projected total expense for the snack pack program. Good news is Pam's already written a grant and gotten $10,000 of that. So we have about $20,000 still left to raise there, but it has to be included as, you know, our fundraising goal. $162,000 is what we're looking at for a projected, and it's kind of out of our normal budget for a storage solutions campaign. And I'm not going to talk much about that because Pam has the scoop on that. But if we wanted to sit down and give a value to our volunteers, the Independent Sector, which is a fantastic publication that supports and pulls together information about nonprofits nationally, actually figures a volunteer value. Now for national, it's $24.69 an hour that volunteers are valued at. In Oregon, because of our volunteers, are valued at $24.89 an hour. So if you costed out all of the, and it's over 4,481 hours is what we have there, we actually didn't include some of our Board numbers and next year we will. If you cost that out, our volunteer value was $101,532.9 and they're worth that and more. So thank you, volunteers. And I'm going to be quiet and let you talk to Pam. She's got more important things to say.
Commissioner Gold has a question.
I just have one question. I notice when I go to the Freddy's every time, they ask to round up to the nearest dollar to give to the food bank. How are you doing on that?
We have not gotten that check yet, but we do every year. And sometimes it's as much as $8,000 to $10,000.
So is it for a month? Is it for a year? How long is that going to go on?
It just depends on how they run it, you know. We don't really, you know, I don't set that for them. It's not something that we are involved in. We just simply get the check.
Oh, okay.
And so as soon as they, yeah, so as soon as they get done with that, they pull it and give us a check. But they do have, some food banks may know this, but they do have a program where you can give a number to everyday shoppers at Freddy's. And they can go in with that number and say, I want you to credit that to the Third Street Food Bank or the Brookings.
Oh, you mean like your rewards?
Like rewards. And we get a check on average about $106 per month from that. And so that helps, that buys a little food.
Yeah, I just thought I'd mention that because every time I go through the line, they always ask, so.
Yeah, and it does come to us, so that's, thank you.
That adds up, I know.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioners, for inviting me today. My name is Pamela Weinberger and I'm the Executive Director for the Brookings Harbor Food Bank, also called the Brookings Harbor Community Helpers. I've been with the food bank since 2017. I came in just before the Cheko Bar fire and actually my Board was always calling me and talking to me and saying, are you going to quit? Are you going to quit? Because the Cheko Bar fire was huge, huge for us. And it was my very first emergency in that respect. So, you know, I, during the Cheko Bar fire and after the Cheko Bar fire, we identified that one problem that we have was storage. If it wasn't for Bernie Bishop bringing us a U-Haul truck that he uses on his, for his business, we would have had nowhere to put food. Literally that 15, 17-foot truck was filled to the top and to the end with canned food from our community. And what a wonderful thing that was. But because of that, we have identified that we just don't have enough storage. And so we started a project, it's called our Storage Solution Capital Campaign for 2019. It's on the back of your packet. And that is, project is about $165,000. We've started that project. We had to take out a tree, which was a maple tree. It was a beautiful tree. We tried to give it away, nobody wanted it. But it was near a water line, so people were creative to pull it. But anyways, we got it pulled out. We had a greenhouse that was not functioning that they have pulled down. And so what we're hoping to do and what our lineup is, is a Phase One, writing the grants, which we, Connie and I are currently in the process of doing, doing some project planning. And then Phase 1.5 was removing that greenhouse and the plants and then getting bids for concrete pads or even asphalt. And what is it? I know that... I know that, I know the name of it, and that just kind of left me. Oregon Food Bank has said that they would find a storage container for us, so we're looking for an eight by 20-foot storage container to bring onto the property. We have not lost hope that somewhere in the county, we will find a place to build a new food bank, because we need one. As you see with our numbers, and I know Connie got ahead of herself in some of those, I wanna go over just a few of those numbers so that you kind of know what happened with the food bank. In 2018, we did serve over 4,200 people with boxes. Of those 4,200 people, that equaled to 12,978 people that we serviced in the county. Now, you know, for in Brookings and Harbor, there's not that many people, and so that means a lot of those times, that we're duplicating those services to people every month. Our daily counter, a lot of people think it's just for our homeless, it is not for our homeless, it is for our seniors, it is for our vets, it's for our working poor, the people that are struggling just to eat. We have one young man that comes in, and he gets food for the day just so he can go to work, because he has not enough food on his, in his household, and he's a household of one, but we provide a protein and a breakfast cereal and a couple of granola bars and water and bread, or whatever we have extra that's over to those people, and that's over 11,000 people in 2018. Now, in 2017, we do snack packs, and we've done snack packs for about four years. 2017, we, we had 3,900 snack packs that we gave to children. That's a lot of snack packs. Last year, we did over 8,400. That's almost a triple in the amount of kids that we're giving snack packs to, and we know that there is probably 30% of our children that are, have food insecurities in our school. Let me tell you a simple story. Last year in February, the school person that does their extended day program approached me and she said, "Pam, can you guys provide snacks to our kids? We wanna kind of get our kids to come in, and these are kids that because of Proposition 96 have to stay after school because they're failing, okay?" And I said, "Well, how many kids do you have in that program?" She said, "22." I said, "Not a problem, I'll provide it for you." Within three weeks, we had 150 kids come into that program, per week. Now, we service over 690 kids in that program. Now, a lot of those kids are duplicates every single day, but now she has kids that are coming to her because they come to school and they haven't eaten since 6 o'clock the night before, and they're hungry, and they can't concentrate, and so they're asking her, "Do you have a granola bar or something?" So, we're giving more snacks. And so, this represents the 8,400 kids and the snacks, not the kids, but the snacks that we're providing to these kids, and now we've put in something else with them. I said, "You know what? We're gonna make a difference with these children. If these children are hungry, we're gonna send them a snack pack like we do at our food bank, we're gonna send them home with a snack pack." And so, that's what we've done. Now, we provide 50 snack packs a week to that school program, and they're called double snack packs, so there's enough food for them to share with their brother or sister, and makes a difference for them. So, the Oregon Food Bank is gonna help us provide a storage container, and that we will be better prepared for emergency, our emergency preparedness. We're getting ready to make sure that we have what we need. We need site preparation for the storage container, we need to build out with shelves and cooling, all those kind of things. And of course, it's my job to write grants and to make the public aware of what's going on. So, we're gonna be able to hopefully raise a significant amount of money, over $160,000, so that we can do this. But, what I'd like to present to you and to the community is, we could really use some in-kind donations, somebody that knows how to, I don't know, maybe pour asphalt. Maybe they have a company that they would be able to be willing to make a driveway or make an asphalt driveway or a concrete pad or whatever, to help us out, to help us with construction. We need a small little shed to put our trash cans in, because sometimes people like to dump their trash, and then we only have one trash can, and so they like to put their trash in our trash can, and so then we don't have enough room for all of ours. Because whenever we get food in, there are some food that are expired, we have to throw that away, so we have to throw that away in our trash can anyways. But, I'm just hoping that between what we're making the community aware of, and everything that we can do our best to do what our mission is, and that is no one goes hungry, and I just thank you for giving me this time to be able to speak with you today, and I hope that our county can make a difference, because I know our food banks are. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one thing to say.
Okay.
And this is to everyone out there that donates their time, their finances, their money, the organizations. I'd like to just say thank you very much.
Thank you.
All of you for what you do.
Thank you very much.
I might give you a lead on something.
Okay.
And I don't want to put anyone in a hot seat, but I do know that Tidewater and Freeman both sometimes have a load that goes out that gets recalled for a reason. If you could get the forms built for that from someone in kind, if you contacted those companies, they sometimes also will donate their service to come in and pour three, four, five, 10 yards, whatever it is. They might donate, easily donate the concrete or something like that, so that's someone you might want to reach out to.
Absolutely, absolutely, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. We know you're growing out of your present facility, so maybe we'll be able to take a roll down the road and help you find a location, and just, I'm amazed the time you got here, as you mentioned, just prior to the fire, and the intensity of that whole thing, and the thousands of people you helped, and not just moving food, but moving a lot of water.
Yeah, a lot of water.
And so, I hope that, yeah, this generates interest from more volunteers and donations.
Absolutely, thank you very much.
For all three of our county locations. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely, thank you.
Ms. Loshbaugh, will you want to bring your friend Mary up? Come on, Mary.
I would like to put on a little video if I could get some help from the gentleman.
I think I have the mouse here.
Okay, thank you. And thank you so much for inviting us to be here today. It's great, each time we get to talk about us, we love it.
We do.
Our little community.
Yeah.
I didn't, do I just, I don't even know how to do it, Mr. Boys.
Put it on the table, or put it on the podium, and move it around.
I sit on there, and where are we?
I don't see, there it is on top, there you are.
See it?
Yep, slow down.
I was there.
You gotta go real slow with that one.
Thank you.
There he is.
That's who I was looking for.
You have to go really slow.
There you go, thank you. Thank you.
Guess you could say I'm a refugee of sorts, not the kind you normally read about, fleeing conflict and violence, but one that is more unique to America these days than anybody readily wants to admit. Health issues ended my employment in California, and whether it's the
Here he comes.
Maybe it's buffering.
Not sure.
Oh, it's buffering. Internet around here, right?
Yeah, right. That's our garden out there that we have, that we grow fresh roots and vegetables.
Guess you could say I'm a refugee of sorts, not the kind you normally read about, fleeing conflict and violence, but one that is more unique to America these days than anybody readily wants to admit. Health issues ended my employment in California, and whether it's the first affordable health insurance I've had in 15 years. As they say, it was time to get the hell out of Dodge, or purgatory as the case may be. Turned out this town I stumbled upon is full of people who've had to get the hell out of somewhere.
We seem to have an ever-growing homeless population.
So, I've started something new for monthly education.
I was in denial about being homeless for a while, not like I knew it was happening, but it's like it wasn't really real.
I'm grateful that I have a place to live right now, however, it's not sheltered completely.
I never thought in a million years that I would actually need a place like Common Good, and then I found myself in that situation where if I don't have Common Good, I wouldn't survive basically.
I'm sure that's getting heavy. Thank you very much.
This community has a lot of need, our children are in need, and we try to fulfill some of those needs we can't fulfill.
One in four working families are accessing our food pantries, and one in four kids are living in poverty, one in four kids are showing up to school hungry.
People do seem to feel like they're responsible for their brothers, and they really feel like if they have something, they need to share it with those who don't.
We're all volunteers, nobody gets paid.
We got 30 of these.
We're spending an awful lot of time and lots of energy and a considerable amount of fun, but it's, I see it paying off. It's slow, but it's paying off.
I think we're a compassionate community, and we try to be. This is one of the most beautiful places in the world to live.
I think the food bank is doing everything that they can do, I think they do an amazing job, but I don't think the food bank in a small community that's only open one day a week is enough.
So, in some ways, we're back to feeling a bit of angst over what the future may hold, more accurately, what it may deny, but I'm gonna stick around, it's been a positive experiment of sorts for me, a community that for the most part acts like one.
We don't have sophisticated government-run social institutions or things, we just have people that like to help people, feel good about it.
That's kind of a little overview of who we are, but I'm really proud to be part of this community that pulls together. What I, what we want to talk about today is the insecurity. In the last two years, we've gone from serving 200 boxes a month to people to over 450 now, and it's been in just such a short amount of time. Our town has 1,100 people in it, and we're giving out 450 boxes of food a month. And what Brookings said is so true, we now, we've never done this before, but we have the high school coming to us and saying, "The kids are hungry, they're falling asleep in class, can you help us out?" And we're sending everything we can up there, and they're eating the cereal, they're having anything healthy we can get, we pull up fruit, the cereal we always try to have, but it's just, it just amazes me how much, the more that, the more we try, the bigger the need is, and it doesn't seem like we're keeping ahead of it, and we're trying, but it's not. And I hear you asking for people to help, we have, we're so fortunate, the Rotary came in when we wanted to do that garden, all we said was, "We'd really like to grow our own food," and there they were with the rototiller, and the church said that we could use their backyard, and we had that, and now we have our greenhouse the same way. We're very fortunate in Port Orford that if we ask, it comes, and the same has happened with our food, when we've been totally out of food, there've been days that, our pantry manager was pictured in there, she passed away this week, and I remember her biggest food, her biggest fear was that we wouldn't have any food when people came, and we've come really close to that before, and what always happens, and her favorite story was someone, we had nothing, I mean, we were just empty and people kept coming, and Carnahan Chickens up Langloes came and brought us 50 dozen eggs, just brought it in, and somebody else brought their garden stuff, and we're chasing people down the road. We have food now, we have food. And so, the community is really blessed with that steady funding stream, is even though we're all volunteer, we still have to pay rent, and we still have to pay for the food, but we appreciate this county.
$5,000 a month for water for the garden in the summertime. Whoa. City in the city.
Yeah. It's, I mean, expenses are high, they really are, but we appreciate this county, and thank you for letting us come talk, and just thank you for being there. Please keep in mind that in Port Orford, we're about to lose our Meals on Wheels, and the Common Good has been asked to take that over, and I don't know that we have the funds for it, we've checked into insurance, and I'm not sure we can, and we need that Meals on Wheels program, we desperately need that Meals on Wheels, and Langloes has lost their food bank, so now we'll be getting those people too. Thankfully, we all work together, and thank you so much for
Stay up there for a second, if I may. Yeah, I felt too, it was easy to get ahold of you, and Connie, and Pam, and Jim, and Lila, struck out unfortunately at Langloes.
They're gone, yeah.
Yeah, but to have you here and the other four guests that just spoke, you know, I would challenge the community, if there's any master gardeners out there, is there any in the audience? Master gardeners, OSU?
I have, I really need to add that OSU has been amazing.
Yes.
They come and they use whatever weird food that we have, and they'll make up recipes with it, and feed our people as they come in and wait in line, and pass out the recipes so that they know how to use colorabi and lentils to make a really nice meal for their family. So, we do have local people that come in, and that garden has been such a blessing, but volunteers, always volunteers, and as I just said, we lost our pantry manager.
I have a good friend that reminded me the other day, said, "Health," he's in his late 50s, says, "non-packaged," or excuse me, non-labeled foods." And so, we're working on some of our county properties that might be adequate for community gardens, I mean, fencing with the deer we have here is always an issue, but just having you all here today, I think opens up some really good doors for pulling the county together. You understanding Brookings' challenges back and forth, Gold Beach, and if anybody that's listening wants to get in touch with any of you, they can do it through staff, Jesuit, our office, and
Thank you.
We just really appreciate on short notice you coming and contributing. Nice movie, I'm gonna see that again. Wonderful job.
It's gonna be a longer version soon.
Maybe we'll be able to help, thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate that. And as I'm walking back, I want to say that Valley Flora has been amazing too. You know, you extend the big bucks on Valley Flora and their, their nice organic produce, we get that every week. They're just amazing, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Well, I think what we need to do is, by law, we have to take a 15-minute recess, so before we move on to the presentation on the tax proposal, why don't we take 15 minutes real quick, and we'll be back.
If yours is the next big idea, and you need the right place to fine-tune it, build it, launch it, if you're only your best when you can play more than you work, if inspiration comes from the outside, you belong in Curry County. The westernmost point of the land you love, and the edge between familiar and uncharted. Break the pattern, be where the airports are as close as the beaches, and industry and recreation never cease to amaze. Dock, dive, and dine in a single day, and never lose your connection. This is the threshold of the West. Live where you can do you, and do it well, at the farthest point from ordinary.
We have these parks which are set up to protect and preserve biodiversity. That's challenging under any circumstances, but it certainly is almost impossible if you don't know what the actual biodiversity in your park or the area that you're trying to conserve is.
A BioBlitz is a celebration of biodiversity. Biodiversity is the variety of life in an area. We don't know how much life and what types of life are here at Crater Lake National Park. The big obvious things, we know about, but a BioBlitz is where we go out and look for a particular type of organism. This year, we're looking for beetles, or the order Coleoptera.
The wealth of biodiversity that are in these parks, 99% of it is something that could fit in your hand.
We can't save what we don't know exists, so if there's a beetle species out there that's very important, and we don't know about it, we can't do anything to help it. That is the ultimate goal of the BioBlitz. It's a way that citizens can come here, we have volunteers that are here who are actually giving this information, they're using their time to help the scientists build a greater picture of what kind of beetles are here in this park.
Getting this sort of baseline data of what biodiversity is there Getting this sort of baseline data of what biodiversity is there not only shows us what's there, which is just intrinsically interesting for its own purpose, but it also begins to set a baseline. And that baseline dataset is what we then can use. And not just scientists, but the general public and those land managers, the stakeholders in that BioBlitz, can use those observations then on into the future to understand if things are changing.
It's not so much about counting number of species. It's more about seeing a fuller picture of the biodiversity. And the biodiversity is the variety of different types of organisms, different types of species.
I do believe that in their past BioBlitzes, that they have expanded the number of things they now had recorded from the park, but also confirmed that some of the things that were reported historically are still present. So even if it's not a new discovery for the park, it still creates another piece of data that tells us, yes, that thing still lives here and is still thriving or maybe struggling, but we begin to learn something about it. I think that has an intrinsic value to the park for its long-term future, but it also just has an intrinsic social value. When you ask questions about why do we have these parks? And there's lots of ways to answer that question. But one of them is that the parks are these areas where we, where we go to appreciate the wildlife there. And this is a way of tapping into some of that wildlife at all sorts of different levels. One of the key things besides the biology that's involved in these BioBlitzes is the interaction with the public and the opportunity to educate the public about the biodiversity around them.
The citizen scientists are here working alongside professional scientists. And that allows them not just to connect with science here at the park, but connect with the greater scientific community. It's a, it's a real positive thing. We see all ages coming here and, uh, and they're just acting like kids, out searching for bugs, but they're doing real science at the same time. It's a great connection between this amazing resource and the people that live around it.
One of the things I really appreciate about our entire region is that we embrace who we are. And I think that's what unifies us. Once the timber and fishing industries collapsed, it took us a long time to get back on our feet. People didn't quite grasp the idea that once these jobs left, they weren't going to get other family wage jobs. And it crippled us.
Things were getting really dire. So we just thought that this was an opportunity to maybe look at that public land a little differently and how it could bring more dollars into our region.
The Wild Rivers Coast is so unique because there are more wild and scenic rivers here than anywhere else in the lower 48 states. The scenic beauty is just amazing. There's so many different places to go, from the national forests down to the protected ocean. And it's just a really special place.
I guess I didn't really know how special it was though, until I moved away to Portland and came back and saw all the potential here.
We're uncrowded. We're unspoiled. And we're a little difficult to get to, but my God, once you come here, you fall in love.
We just thought if we could pull people to come into this Wild Rivers Coast and stay longer and explore a little farther into our backcountry, there was a lot of opportunities for them to experience.
I think our whole future is at stake here. This area is ready to go. We just need to give it a little kick in the butt.
I'm going to be honest, when the Rural Tourism Studio came here, I was skeptical because I didn't see far enough ahead that we actually could collaborate regionally. And I'm pleasantly surprised. It's been amazing.
The Rural Tourism Studios was the first time we were able to come together as a region to talk about the future of our economy.
If we can have a strong tourism economy in this area, it's going to benefit the whole community.
We have to rely on ourselves. And I think through this program, it's sort of opened our eyes to what we could do when we work together. Community leaders really focused on three areas. Outdoor recreation, food, and agricultural tourism, and really building community relationships.
In our area, a lot of the food that's grown all gets shipped away. And so now we're realizing that we can capture some of that local food that's grown here. The Eat Fresh and Local Action Team has hosted a series of networking events, bringing together the area growers with the area vendors so that we could have more local food available to the visitors to our area. And now we're seeing more local food in our grocery stores, in our restaurants, and we have a new local food co-op.
We created a farm trail from Banden to Port Orford. We did nine UPEC farms, and it just gained traction, and people loved it.
Langloes is less than 500 people. It's very small. So we have to bring in tourists. And being on the farm trail, even though it's just beginning, has really helped do that. We really want to make it a destination for anybody. My mom and I began Dragonfly Farm just three years ago. When I found out that I could grow a seed and turn that into food, it was like, oh my gosh, why wouldn't you do this? I just quit my, my day job, and I just signed the paper to be an official co-owner of the farm. This is what I want to do for the rest of my life and grow with the community.
Out of the Outdoor Recreation Action Team, we came up with a series of maps that show where the best places to go recreate are. We know where we're going to send people now, and we got a great map that shows all the best places to go see.
For us to get a mapping project done to this extent is pretty impressive. We're patting ourselves on the back. I don't know anybody else's, but we're doing it.
From that, we decided that there was some places that needed help. So we came up with a mountain bike plan, and we also worked on designating a state scenic bikeway. The Outdoor Recreation Action Team was also looking at how we can make scuba diving better in this area. So we came up with the idea for a scuba fill station. So now people that want to come and dive in this area, they can dive for multiple days because they can get their tanks filled up again. When I started the Rural Tourism Studio, my business, South Coast Tours, was really small. And now we've grown to about five or six guides. And we're doing tours all over from Brookings all the way up to Coos Bay.
Overall, tourism is on the rise here. We've had a bang up last two years. And it's like a breath of fresh air down here.
My hope for the area is that we still keep that sense of place.
Loving a place to death is a big concern that I have, and it's a balance. We're going to promote tourism, but we want to do it in a sustainable way. One of the biggest reasons that this area...
Click the OK button is what he's saying. Right there.
Not going to be much help, John. Did come up on, I got four of the same thing.
That's okay. I mean, I've got all my notes, so.
Thank you.
And it's going to be pretty condensed.
Do you need something up here?
I don't, I don't think it's available. To my knowledge, we actually, I don't have anything up here, but John knows for sure. I don't know. Depends on what he has. Oh, I'm fine just for the oral. Yeah, but thank you, Charles.
All right. We're going to come back into order. Next on our presentations is Curry Consumption Tax Proposal. John Hitt.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is John Hitt. Actually, I'm later on the agenda too, under 6B, under Personal Services Agreement, to provide planning support, consulting services, as well as other services as directed by you as the Board of Commissioners and by Julie Schmelzer. Before I forget, I would like to ask Mr. Chairman, with your permission, to be able to come back and make just a couple of comments on Agenda Item 6B when we get there. But right now, I would like to present to you a discussion, really. What it says in the agenda is a proposal. I think that's premature at this point. What I would like to do just simply is give an overview, like the 30,000, maybe it's a 50,000-foot view of consumption tax, experience of other communities, and some of the things that we might consider if you all decide to move forward. And I do want to respect your time. I know you have a very busy agenda, so I'll have to move through this quite quickly. First, I would like to point out, a year ago, or not quite a year ago, I made a presentation about the overall county financial status and how it has changed over the years. Curry County for many years has faced declining revenues and the face of increased expenses. So leaving the Curry County with a situation, at least in my opinion, that the status quo is not an acceptable option. Status quo means we'll continue to experience declining revenues and increasing expenses. And at some point, and we're probably really pretty much at that point right now, those two cross, and you start to get further and further behind. So what are the options to address that? Well, there are many, some of which have been discussed here before. But one of the ones I want to just focus on right now is the Consumption Tax Proposal. And there are at least two, there are actually many communities that have a consumption tax. But I would like to just point out two of them real briefly. City of Ashland has a 5% consumption tax, falling primarily on prepared foods and beverages. Oh, and that in turn has some exemptions. And City of Ashland generates roughly $3 million per year off of that tax. I might add, just as a sidebar, since you have a TLT or TOT, Transit Occupancy Tax on the agenda, Ashland City alone, that's not counting the state or the county, TOT, but Ashland alone collects 10%, and at $5.8 million per year in revenue. I took a look at a county out of state, which sounds a little bit odd, but Pacific County, Oregon, which lies just over the Columbia River on the Pacific coast. Kind of a very similar county in many ways to Curry County. Roughly the same population, heavily tourism-dependent economy like ours, along with fishing and forestry. And also geographically fairly isolated from the I-5 corridor, as are we. Pacific County imposes a 1.5%, so a much lower rate than Ashland, but on a much broader tax base. The, and I will go take the time to tell you what that tax falls on and what's exempted. But I'll let you know that Pacific County, at that 1.5% consumption tax rate, generates $1.7 million per year. Curry County has total taxable sales, retail sales, based on a reasonable projection from the 2012 economic census of roughly $300 million a year. What are some of the exemptions out of that? Because very few entities, in my experience, my knowledge, have a total cross-the-board tax on all retail sales. Almost everyone that does that, whether it's at the state level, county level, or local level, exempts certain things. Some of the most common are food, pharmaceuticals, and many other particulars. You just heard a few minutes ago the testimony from Mary Rowe. And I agree with her, this is not a tax where one size fits all. I, what works in Ashland may or may not work here. What works in Pacific County or other locations in Washington or Oregon may or may not be appropriate for us. And it is something that needs careful weighing and consideration as to what should be taxed and what should be exempt. And what should be the rate of that tax? Is it one and a half? Is it one? Is it five? Or some other number? And how is that tax best and most fairly collected? And so I think that is something that needs careful review and consideration. And would ask that you maybe consider appointing an ad hoc committee to take a look at that. If you want to proceed at all, if you choose to proceed and further consider this matter, an ad hoc committee that I could work with or some other staff person could work with and figure out what is the size that is going to be the best fit for Curry County. Now, Mary Rowe did say, I think Mary's gone unfortunately, but Mary did say something that totally shocked me when she proposed a tax on coffee. I mean, that's, that's just like Twilight. No, I'm joking. All I really do, love my coffee. But if you factor out most of the exemptions or the typical exemptions that other counties and cities do for consumption tax, we would probably end up with a net taxable base of somewhere around $250 million. You could see then that a 1.5%, if we were to be more like Pacific County, would generate something in the order of $2.3 million per year. Now, I think one other thing, and Mary touched on this, as you Commissioners yourselves have touched on this, and that is, we need to focus on specific uses for this, these funds. In my experience, in various tax revenues, proposals in actually three states, Oregon, Washington, and California, the taxpayers want to see a firm commitment for their money to go to certain things. There'll be a clear public benefit. So I would certainly recommend that be the case here. Some of the possible, and I think attractive, uses for these funds would be public safety. This, the, the South County Emergency Room. Emergency communications here. We've all been well discussed and are aware of the fact that our emergency communication system is teetering on the edge of the cliff. So if we're not to have a disastrous failure where everybody goes dark, we, we need to do action very quickly. And that's not a cheap or quick fix. Visitor promotions, another good use of that. I mentioned Pacific County, their tax, they allocate of that tax, they collect 300, almost $400,000 a year for visitor promotion, just at the county level. County parks, repay the road fund, borrowing from the road fund, economic development and housing. We've all seen the acute housing need here in Curry County. Public water systems improvement, and then a tiny percentage, 4%, 5%, something in that range, for tax administration costs. So I know you're also considering an advisory ballot on this matter. And however you wish to proceed, again, I would just conclude by recommending that we get more public input on how to really tailor this type of tax to generate the level of income that the county needs from these various particular projects and needs, or others that might be added or taken away. And so that it falls in the most fair and reasonable way on the average Curry County citizen. Keep it in mind, again, in our case, much of that tax, probably a third, maybe more than that, depending how the tax is structured, would actually fall on people coming into Curry County from the outside, visitors and others. And as was pointed out also earlier... And as was pointed out also earlier, that's a reasonable, by Lucy Labonte, that's a reasonable need. Those visitors, those guests to the Currie County, while we love to have them, they promote business, but there's also resources that need to be allocated to those visitors. So we want to have a tax, again, that appropriately is shared by those visitors, and not an undue or unfair burden to our residents. So that concludes my remarks, and answer any questions you may have at this time.
Commissioner Gold?
I was looking at the possible advisory thing to go on the ballot, and one of the things on there was real estate. A consumption tax on real estate in excess of 100,000. So just getting this this morning, I did a little quick research and found out that the average home in all of Currie County is 313,000, 313.4,000. And these are hot off the press.
Right. Well, I think you raise a good point, Commissioner Gold, and that relates to the fact that more study needs to be done, as to if there are, if this tax is opposed to a real estate transaction, so that's one question, should it be? And the second question, if we answer that, or a advisory group says yes, or you decide yes, then what, how should that tax be levied? So do you exempt 100,000? Do you exempt 200,000? Do you exempt even 300? What was your number, 350 something?
Well, it was 313.4, and that's all of Currie County. I got into all of the others, you know, the Brookings area and so forth, but I just came up with an average, and if you just looked at 1.5% tax, that would be an average of 28, 38 extra.
Per sale.
Yeah, per sale, and 2% would be 37, 84. That's with the exemption of 100,000. So I think these are some important considerations, and I would hesitate
They are.
to put this on the ballot in May without really having studied it. Because I just got this thing this morning, and I'm thinking, not a good idea just to shove it through.
Council Huddle?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. And so, one of the elements that I heard about the presentation or saw in the materials was a tax on the transfer of real property. There is a statute that says local governments can't do that, it's 306-815. I'm working with the Association of Oregon Counties. Because this would only be an advisory question, we may be able to use the information to tell the legislature, you know, the people of the counties would like this. So because it's just an advisory question, I just want to let the board know that there could be bumps in the road on that particular part of this issue in the future, but as an advisory question, we could just use the information to tell the state.
Yeah, I've never heard of a real estate tax, even in California. I lived there for quite some time.
Washington State does collect that.
Do they?
Yeah, and I forget the percent. I think it's like 2.
But in California, when you sell your home, it's reassessed at the sale price, and that's what your tax becomes, and that's not happening in Oregon.
Oh, that's true, because of Jarvis.
Those are things that we can look at as well, is when people come up here to buy property, maybe we reassess the property, maybe with some exempt part of it, but the property gets properly reassessed at the value of the property, is what you're willing to pay for it.
So it does say that the prohibition doesn't apply to a tax adopted under 203, and I think it says 815, but let me see.
I think you're not wrong on that, I'll tell you.
In what way? Talk to me. What are you saying?
I'm just kidding, I'm being facetious.
Okay. I just have to see, because the 203 chapter is our local self-governance chapter, but that, that might be a home rule section, which we're not. So, like I said, work in progress on that, so we'll just have to keep in mind that there could be bumps on that, but taking a survey of the county citizens isn't precluded by any prohibition.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, hey, thanks for great work, especially the research in the other state there, Washington, you mentioned. Fascinating, the one county you mentioned was able to pay out 300,000, if I understood correctly, towards visitor promotion.
Yeah, almost 400,000.
Almost 400?
Yep.
So we have our shoppers coming over from the border, and at 2%, they would still save almost 5% in what we might...
It's high in California.
Yeah. I don't feel like getting a sense from the voters on a very basic plan is ramming it through in May. I would, I very much appreciate, and would love to have you participate in, as you said, ad hoc committee, that recommendation. I think that would be premature, though, until we see how this vote went, and you have mentioned that prior. In the vote to, you know, you've mentioned also, Mr. Hitt, that our spending is going up and our revenue is coming down. I'm not sure about that. I know that we've had some wasted spending the last couple of years, it's just deplorable. And so, no, nothing like this is gonna pass until we get the trust of the citizens that we're gonna get spending under some discipline and control. But if we listed, one you didn't mention was the harbor water, 5%, and then the Port Orford Langless Water Projects, or did you?
I included those both into public water system improvements.
Oh, great, okay. But there's three communities that really need help. We're not gonna get it through Forest Receipts, we're not gonna get it through race property taxes. I think you said, reminded us that a third of the funds would come from both, or combined, Tourism A and B, which is over the California-Oregon border, in addition to visitor destination. For two years, I've been promoting the review of this, and it's been an uphill battle, and we finally, because I, both in April and in 17, and in October of 17, I tried to come up with a Consumption Tax Advisory Committee, we called C-TAC, and we had a lot of the work done in 2012, and I got shot down on that twice. During that time, I haven't heard any other possible options from anyone in the county other than the TLT tax, and I'm gonna be vigorously supporting that, but it's, it's not a lot of money that we can count on, even for law enforcement. So I want to go over what I heard you say again on, and I would assume this would be in the ballot, that would certainly be my preference, but public safety, South County Emergency Room, the new countywide communication microwave system and replacement, visitor promotion. Now, the first three are 15% visitor promotion, a 10, county parks development, 10%. That adds to our whole visitor mystique, I think. Repay the road fund reserves, I think you said up to five previous years, 10% of that $3 million that we'd be collecting. I think that that is, that's a pretty lofty goal, but I think it's something we really have to make an effort toward. And then again, the harbor water and Port Orford Langless, and then, yeah, 10%, oh, economic development and housing. I mean, when you look at the problems we have with Southern Oak Death, with the housing, the loss in tourism due to the fires in two consecutive years, yeah, I challenge anyone to find a better possible option than this, and so I'd like to, Mr. Chair, to the extent that we can refine this in the next few days, and in a very broad concept, see if the voters, based on what we prioritize as the spending for this county, and the emergency holes that we need to fill as soon as possible, yeah, I'd like to see it go before the voters and see if they, if it even, after May, we may say no, or we may say, yeah, we're back to our committee, let's come up with a really refined plan that we can offer the public, and go from there. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just in being mindful of time, we are gonna be up against a time crunch if we're going to have a meeting, another meeting in this room at 2 o'clock, so I would ask for somewhat brevity in some of the comments here, it would be appreciated. Mr. Barnes?
Thank you very much, I'm David Barnes. I don't know if I've gone on record before, but I will now. I'm highly opposed to a Consumption Tax. Consumption taxes are regressive, they disproportionately affect the poor and the working poor and the senior citizens, who comprise about 75% of our population in Currie County. According to what I just heard, correct me if I'm wrong, but we, what I just heard was 1/3 of the revenue that we expect to get from this tax will come from visitors. That puts the other 2/3 of it on the citizens of Currie County. I don't believe that Ashland is a proper comparable. Ashland has 247 restaurants and draws thousands of people a day just to their Shakespeare Festival. To compare us to Ashland and how much we get is just, I believe that's an improper assertion. And Commissioner Boyce, you challenge for other options? I'll give you another option. Our number-one tourist attraction in this county is our view from 101. We give it away for every day, every day for nothing. Put a toll booth on the southern border, put another one on the northern border. We have 2,000 to 3,000 cars a day pass over the borders of this county. If you charge, giving everybody in Currie County a pass and only charging people who live out of county to come into this county will generate far more money than this Consumption Tax will, and it will have zero effect on the pocketbooks of the people of Currie County. I listened earlier, as all these people came up talking about the food banks and necessity of food, and how many food boxes they're preparing, and how many kits they're preparing, and if you introduce and you apply a Consumption Tax to the people of Currie County, you can look for those numbers to double in the food banks. You know, people who are now eating 25 days a month are going to be eating 22 days a month when you start taking money from them. It's just absolutely and patently unfair. You look at any economic site, any tax site, you go to the IRS website in tax school, and they tell you that this tax is unfair to seniors, the poor, and the working poor, and I just think it's wrong for you to impose it upon the people of Currie County, so that we can get some money from tourists when they come here for three months a year. The people in the county are gonna be paying it all year long, and I just think that's wrong.
Would you like to serve on the ad hoc committee and help with the exemptions? Because exemptions are pretty basic right now.
No, thank you, sir. I don't believe in this tax. I couldn't, I could not serve on a committee.
So how do we get our towers fixed?
Excuse me?
How do we get our towers replaced and updated, as Mr. Hitt said? It could be pushing us into darkness if we don't have communication. Where is that money gonna come from?
Like I said, you put a toll on your southern border.
Okay, we had that option, and you and I in the paper today were called, what was it again?
Tweedledee and Tweedledum, we've been nicknamed now, yes.
You know, it's monetizing an asset.
I will say, Mr. Barnes, I have looked into that at length. I've been in touch with state legislators and a couple of federal ones. There is a way to do it, and that would be to get it off of federal highway and state-run highways onto county land. It would be pushing a boulder uphill. It would be a tremendous thing that would probably take years to get through the state legislature. It's not something that the county can just do.
I understand that, but you know, it is an option. You say, Commissioner Boyce claims there's no other options, and no one has come up with anything, and that's why we have to do this, but there are other options, and they are. You know, they're talking about doing it in Portland, making, paying, people have to pay, will have to pay to come into the city of Portland. I come from back east. You can't travel from one state to the next without paying a toll.
As do I.
I don't see why it would be so resistant here, especially if you made it so the people in Currie wouldn't have to pay for it.
As you know, I was, I was the voice behind that in the beginning, and I'm still behind it, if we can find a way to do it, but I doubt we will.
But is it realistic? Okay, you just answered that, thank you. It's not a realistic option.
All right. So, next we're going to move on to Consent Agenda.
Can I give a quick, brief summary of everything on the consent agenda?
Yes, you can.
So with the Board of Commissioner Minutes from January 7th, you'll notice a new format. We are not doing the transcript-style format anymore. JJ did a good job, I think, on capturing what happened in the minutes or at the meeting. If anybody wants to see the full detail or review the transcript, or they can go on and look at the video. Next, we have the Juvenile Department Administrative Assistant Job Description Amendment. You've received that. You also have the Juvenile Department Crew Supervisor Job Description Amendment. That would be to have a supervisor at eight hours a week. The director is here in case we have questions on that. We have the Subscription Agreement for Non-Represented Employees, Subscription Agreement for Bargaining Unit Employees, which you have in your packet. Appointment of Richard Christensen, the Roadmaster, to SWAT. And then we did remove GHNI. We are adding the Transfer Order to hire Amy Gaddis-Parker in the Juvenile Department to replace Summer Madison. And just a note on that order, it says Amy Gaddis, it should be Amy Gaddis-Parker is her complete name. And then the final item we have is the Hire Order for Henry Eppert, which is basically rehiring Hank in the Building Safety Department to help us out until we can get a, for a full-time employee hired on there.
And that one's on a very limited basis, as I understand it?
It is.
What an update.
He is retired, so he can only work, he has to work less than 20 hours, so it's at 19 hours a week, maximum.
Maximum? Even that's a lot, okay. All right. Anything further for the Consent Agenda? Make a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair, we approve the Consent Agenda with changes.
Any further discussion? Roll?
Commissioner Gold?
Yes?
Vice Chair Boyce?
Aye.
Chair Pash?
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
I love you, JJ.
Some days, right?
Most days. Action items. Proclaiming March 2019 as the Revive Civility Month. And I will not go into a full reading of this, I'm sure the other Commissioners have a copy of it before them. It is basically, as stated, it's being civil to one another and working together as a team, improving our language to each other. It has been nationally recognized. Ex-Board Member Lucy Labonte brought this to my attention, and I completely agree with her on this. I think it'd be a great step for Currie County to recognize this, and I would ask that the Board recognize March as the Revive Civility Month.
My move that we recognize March as the Civility Month here in the county.
Any further discussion?
Just a comment?
Comment?
In the past, a couple of years ago, the Board actually did pass, I can't remember if it was a resolution or a statement agreeing to be civil, and that was actually entered into a federal database, so if you want, we can try and get this entered in there as well.
Perfect. That'd be great. Yes?
We had a motion, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Boyce?
Would you characterize, just personally, our meetings the last, since January 7th, as reasonably cordial?
I would characterize them that.
Thank you.
Do I have a second? I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? Roll?
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes?
Chair Pash?
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Uh, Commissioners, if I may really quickly, Lucy Labonte, Legal Woman, Vours, I thank you for this. The City of Gold Beach has passed one, City of Port Orford's on the docket this week, and I believe City of Brookings is coming also to do it.
I'll be at the, I'll be at the Port Orford's meeting, so I'll push him a little.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna move on to B, 6B.
Okay, this is the Personal Services Agreement with John Hitt for Planning Services. The, what you have before you is a draft services agreement. It did not have the date, under item number four, it did not have the date on it, so I did add February 19th, which is when the date Mr. Hitt actually did start downstairs. That can be changed if you feel otherwise. And then we do have Exhibit A, which is the scope of work. And I know Chair Pash, you had a comment about making sure it was clear who he, who the position responded to, or...
Well, I just wanted to make sure, yeah, exactly, is who he would answer to, and I believe that should be Director of Operations, and then, of course, the Board if there's a further action needed. And I just wanted to make sure that that's how it was set up.
It was not specified, but we could, and I also think that it should be the Planning Director, because he would directly be taking direction from Ms. Crockett downstairs as he's helping her with the planning project.
Okay, and then the scope of his contract, is that with planning, or is that outside as well? I didn't, I don't have this in front of me, I'm sorry.
Currently, it says, "Planning and Other Special Assignments As Assigned," so...
What would special assignments be?
Well, he was just working on the Consumption Tax, so...
So we can do that as well, okay?
We can change that to be just planning-specific, or to have the other assignments.
Well, is there any... Well, is there any comments from the other rest of the Board? I mean, I'd like to hear.
Well, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Sure, absolutely.
I'm just absolutely thrilled to have him back.
As am I.
I know you are. The, just having his presence in the planning. We've talked with Director Schmelzer about special projects. He volunteered his time on this possible consumption tax after I twisted his arm, so I feel personally obligated to him and terrific gratitude. So, he's going to be working part-time. I wish it was more so. He comes at a tremendous bargain, and I hope it's very short order that we can easily justify a better pay for him. It's way low, but yeah, we're really glad to have him back in Curry County, and our success is going to be based on the people we're able to recruit to solve the incredible problems that we have in this county and make up for the two years we just lost. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I just wanted to make sure that we're just not having him as a fill person for everybody, everyone else's job, is what I guess I'm trying to make sure.
Well, he can handle it.
I know your expertise is in planning. As you know, I've spoken to you privately about it, and I've known you for almost 30, 30 some odd years I've known you, so, you know, I'd just like to make sure that the language is clear on that, that you're not going to feel like a yo-yo being drugged from room to room. And I know you want to make a comment. You can go ahead and step up, sir. I just, like I said, I just wanted to make sure that the language was clear on that, on your higher order, who you report to and what your duties would be. And if one of us has a specific thing that we'd like you to look into for us, you know, I can see that happening as well.
If I could, Mr. Chair, what we usually do with these contracts is have a person be designated as a Contract Administrator, which even if the Board wanted to liaise with Mr. Hitt, they would go through that Contract Administrator as well, so that the person administering the contract, because he's technically an independent contractor, he doesn't necessarily, it's a subtle distinction. Very good, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Okay, so why don't we do that? You're going to be working directly under the Planning Department Director, and then if you could also maybe, maybe Ms. Schmelzer would be your contact person then as well.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Chair.
I think it's a good solution, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. Just real briefly, the only other change I would suggest is under three on the first page, compensation not to exceed. I'm fine with the rate per hour, and then not to exceed 80 hours per month, and I would just add a phrase there because I realize things can sometimes kind of bunch up, and then it's, you know, not so busy, and my time probably wouldn't be needed so much. So maybe add the phrase there, not to exceed 80 hours per month, except as approved by the Contract Administrator. And you would still have the cap of $24,000 per year, and you'd still have, of course, obviously...
Or 80 hours per month on average, something like that.
Or that would be another way of approaching it.
Okay, so we can massage that language.
Okay, that's all I had, thank you, sir.
Mr. Hitt, thank you for catching that, and that, yeah, there may be some weeks that we would need to extend over that, appreciate it. Oh, I did have one more clarification. Is your understanding that he will be under the Planning Department or under your direct supervision?
Well, as Council had suggested, we could put, designate me as the Contract Administrator on that, so I would have the general oversight, but I think he should be reporting directly to Ms. Crockett, because she's the one who has the work down there. She knows what needs to be done in the Planning Department. She's basically the one who has identified the need for help down there.
And is the Board comfortable with using either Julie Schmelzer or Becky Crockett as the liaison to Mr. Hitt? In other words, what I think we'd like to avoid is for the Board to just directly go to Mr. Hitt and give him work when, in other words, a coordination idea is a concept there, and having the coordination be through the Director of Operations and the Planning Director.
Well, I think our coordination should be through Ms. Schmelzer, and then she communicates to Ms. Crockett and to Mr. Hitt.
Nothing against Director Crockett, but no, I would prefer Mr. Hitt to be directly under your authority. That's just my one vote there, sir.
How do you?
Well, since he's working mostly with Ms. Crockett, I think he should be under her, with Julie kind of coordinating the whole thing, and we go to her if we have some need for his services.
Council?
Thanks, just a suggestion. Director Schmelzer is, also fills the role of Community Development Director who oversees Crockett. You might put in there that the Contract Administrator is Director Schmelzer or her designee, then she can appropriately designate Crockett. But in the meantime, John Hitt has one point of contact, the Board has one point of contact, and that might solve all the questions there.
I agree, thank you.
That's fine with me.
All right. Julie, are you, you got that clear enough? John Hitt, does that make sense to you? Okay, very good.
Everybody happy?
Can I just make one more comment? I think it's really important that we as a Board think of the chain of command that we're supposed to be doing rather than inserting ourselves unnecessarily in things. So just a comment.
Okay, thank you. All right, six.
What we would want the Board to do would be to approve it with the changes we suggested or we discussed here today.
Do we need a vote on that, or we go?
We need a vote.
Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the Personnel Services Agreement with John Hitt as Amanda.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Aye.
Chair Pash.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Cede, Wildfire Threat Jackson County Resolution, Commissioner Boyce. Now, we have some comments on this first, so why don't we take the comments first? And again, with time constraints, I would ask for brevity, please.
Thank you, I'm Tim Palmer from Port Orford. I commend you for the civility endorsement, and I'm critical of this particular item, but it's about the language in it and involves nothing personal. I'd like to ask basically some questions about this item that's on the agenda today. First, it's really not clear what is intended. Is it just to replace the name Jackson with Curry in the resolution in your packet? And if so, it's impossible to really know what is being asked for here, and therefore, it's been impossible for citizens to know what is really being proposed, and so we've not really been notified of that. If you look at the details here, under Resolution Item Number One in this item in the packet, why is a resolution necessary to quote, "continue to cooperate with other county governments"? I think we already do this. What path to, what quote, "path to solutions" are you referring to here? How can we commit to a path without really knowing where it goes or what it is? Item Two in the resolution, how does quote, "best science" differ from quote, "best available science"? The, what kind of science are you referring to here? What are the quote, "outcome-based agendas" that it talks about? And what, the most cryptic one of all, a quote, "implementation schemes of artifice"? I don't know what those are. Item Number Three, why is it necessary now for the county to pass a resolution saying you oppose efforts to quote, "erode the county's authority"? We function as a county since 1855, why is this needed today? Item Number Five, the resolution says you'll quote, "continue to actively cooperate in circumstances in which coordination is not applicable." This doesn't make a bit of sense to me. Why would quote, "coordination" be quote, "not applicable"? And if so, why would you resolve then to quote, "continue to cooperate"? I just don't understand it. Item Six, this is the one that concerns me the most, unfortunately. It calls for quote, "legislative mandates to restrict the ability of organizations from performing services as a partnering group with a federal agency." I don't know what's intended by this, but what it says is that the Commissioners would enact or support laws to stop organizations from working on partnerships with the federal government. When you considered this resolution last year, a lot of citizens showed up to oppose it. Here it is again. This could bar groups including the Wild Rivers Forest Collaborative, the Rogue River Watershed Council, and others. I'll leave it, go with that. I'm shocked that we'd take this kind of heavy-handed overreach of government power over the freedom of county citizens in Curry County. The, finally, I'd ask you to put this resolution aside and reject others that might be considered simply because another county passed them. Instead, focus on the jobs that your taxpayers are paying you to do. Many things, in fact, need to be done, but this resolution is not one of them.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Palmer? Thank you for coming here today. If we lived in the Rogue Valley, we'd know why this makes sense, the smoke that they dealt with. Both these, if we want to save time, both of these resolutions were passed in 2017, and you can see what happened in 2018. A lack of effort on prevention of fires and as compared to suppression. Curry County's burning up. I'm not tired of saying it because it's the truth, and it's affecting our way of lives, and our communities are at great risk. I have people in Brookings that I respect and admire greatly that want to sue the Forest Service for the Chetco Bar Fire mismanagement and almost losing Brookings. They do not have that attitude with the Klondike Fire, because they did everything they could with the resources they had. I was there every single day. As we march towards the next fire season, the only thing that you and I seem to disagree on, or one of the main things, excuse me, is what clear-cutting does to our forests and the replantations. Okay, I can show you evidence, best available science, that shows a differing view than what your science has. You also mentioned, and I appreciate that, why are we connecting with other counties? Jackson County, their Commission Board, their Legal Department has worked very hard on this, and I'm even a little bit nervous what's coming to represent this year and the last two fire seasons combined. There's a lot of heartache out there, there's a lot of anger, there's a lot of deep-rooted concern on what's, you know, I'm just hoping and praying we have at least one or two seasons where we don't have this kind of destruction. And so, to show support for Jackson County and the challenges that they have outlined for, and I could just read you one thing here real quick from, actually, a friend of mine lives in Agnes, his name is Grotrian, and he all, with me, I mean, I've been to at least seven or eight in two years, plus field trips on the Wild Forest, you know, the Forest Collaborative, and there's some wonderful people on there, and they're determined. Not full agreement, obviously. However, he wrote a letter to Commissioner Gold, and I think I have it here, and basically, it challenges my Save Oregon Forest, save letters, excuse me, save our forests. Oregon's on the verge of being like California, and if that, as I've said in the past, I hope I'm wrong, because the amount of fuel that we have per acre or per square mile is so, you couldn't possibly compare it with California. All you got to do is look east and see the dense forests. So anyway, Mr. Grotrian wrote, "The wildfire resolution, I'm strongly against the county adopting a go-it-alone stance towards management of public lands, most of which in our county is U.S. Forest Service land." Yeah, 63%, 54% in Oregon. Knowing Mr. Grotrian, I'm sorry or surprised that after he read my letter, that he interpreted that, that I'm wanting to go it alone. I've developed a relationship for this county, because I'm obligated to do that with a new Forest Ranger, and I'm just going to read one paragraph and try and understand, and I challenge Mr. Grotrian on this, how he come up with, "I want to go it alone", and I could give a lot of other examples, his response to my three-page letter and how it affects Curry County. I must state, however, we should be grateful, we currently have in place experienced and committed leadership in our Rogue River Siskiyou National Forest. He's coming next week, and I would encourage everyone to spend some time and look at his philosophy on wise forest management, public lands. And I hope you'd be here, and I would be much appreciated if you could make it. I also admit to the entire country, in my strong but humble opinion that the Oregon Department of Forestry is simply the very best of the 14 western states. My confidence is bolstered by the hope of our U.S. Forest Service once again returning to great agency status, and there's some people out there determined to make that happen. Should that become a reality, Curry County is going to benefit greatly, because we've got, we've got, 1 million acres been burned in the last 32 years. The county's only 1 million acres, so obviously, some of those have been a second, a third, even a fourth burn. So, we've got to rebuild our forest, long after all of us in this room are gone for the next generations. But, great agency status, but they, along with the Oregon Department of Forestry, need robust public support. It's incumbent upon us that our state takes that, takes those reins in leading and legislating for the necessary changes. Mr. Chair, one more thing. Showing Jackson County that we're on board for changes, and what I think are very responsible changes. There are some things I grant, Mr. Palmer, that are a little bit confusing on this, but I'm going to defer to what they've been through. They certainly have compassion and empathy for what we've been through the last two years. Again, I'd finish with the level of risk that Oregon has in the months and years ahead. We're only three months. It could dry out starting today. And Port Orford, I'm going to say it again, Port Orford burned twice, abandoned twice. I mean, the list is incredible. It got within a quarter mile of my home at Agnes. The Blossom Bar Fire in 2005 got within a quarter mile of my lodge. And it's just a miracle we didn't lose a Rogue River Canyon. The absolute number-one source of pride arguably for Oregon. Thank you, that's all.
Mr. Barnes? And if we could, Mr. Barnes, could we combine the two, please? Thank you.
Yes, sir. I, we need, I understand our need to support Jackson and Josephine County, but unfortunately, I don't believe that they have the same concern about us. These, the resolutions that we're talking about here today, as Commissioner Boyce just said, were put forth in 2017. Since that time, the Jackson and Josephine Counties have gotten together and collaborated with people. A month or so ago, their state representative came down and pulled together everybody for a big town hall meeting to let people know what was happening. They brought together Forest Service people and forestry people and conservationists, and they brought everybody together to have a meeting. They've come out with the Rogue Valley Integrated Fire Plan, which we're not included in. There's also the Rogue Basin Reforestation, the Rogue Valley Reforestation and Something Else Plan that came out around the same time that we're not involved with. Governor Brown went down to Medford on January 30th and handed Jackson and Josephine Counties a check for $1.5 million for reforestation and fuel reduction projects. We're not involved with that, you know? It's one thing to call for action, it's another thing to get up and do something for ourselves. I'd like to read briefly from the Community Mitigation Assistance Team Report from the Curry, from the Chetco Bar Fire. In here, it says, "Invest most of your time and resources on RICs reduction actions, not meetings." That's all we're doing here again, is having another meeting. There's plans out there, there, we have our Community Forestry Plan, we have the Chetco Mitigation Plan. They all call for direct actions, direct fuel reduction actions, direct on-the-ground, boots-on-the-ground, people doing things to reduce our fire risk. That's what we need now. We don't need more resolutions, we don't need more letters to people. We know what has to be done, we need to do it. You know, there's nothing holding us back from doing it. You know, all we're doing is fighting with people about things. This was all done because people came together and collaborated on stuff. I'm not seeing collaboration here, you know? All I'm seeing is, you know, one of the other things in this plan was that, you know, Curry is known for being able to tap into local expertise and local people to resolve our problems. We're not doing that if all we're doing is re-upping other people's resolutions, you know? It's time for us to get off our butts and do something to help ourselves, other than just complaining that the fire season is right around the corner again. We haven't done anything to reduce our risk. You know, we can do something, and we're not doing it. You know, all we're doing is talking about it, but there's things that we can do. You know, I can show them to you in this book. You know, there's things that we can do, we can start on them tomorrow. It's time to stop talking and start doing, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Commissioner Boyce?
I worked. Well, here's my number-one solution, recommended. Reduce ground fuels immediately, put people to work maintaining a hundred-feet thinning and fuel rejection, rejection, reduction, I'm sorry, buffer on each side of key back country roads, each side. I've spent a lot of time in Oregon Department of Forestry to make sure their budget passed and how that'll affect Curry County. Governor Brown come through about two weeks ago, and I'm not trying to take credit, but I know she knows how this affected Curry County. She didn't come down here and hand a check, but we're not done yet. Thank you.
I would like to say one thing, there are some people starting to do some things, I will concur with Mr. Boyce as, as to his actions, um, but we do have people that are local, that we are going to be forming a, I don't wanna say a task force, but an information gathering, and I know that's just people sitting at a table right now talking, but people like Larry Ismert and Lee Riddle and these kind of people that are part of Curry wildfire prevention, I have spoken with them, and they are going to be getting with people like Merv George, who I think is probably one of the most positive, personally, one of the most positive things to happen in Curry County, uh, for fire prevention, and he's willing to sit with these people and start to outline some guidelines and some things that we can do before fire season this year that we can start to do, and it's nice to have people like Lee Riddle and Mr. Ismert that have lived their lives in the forests here to explain, you know, the Chetco winds that nobody understood, and that's why we almost lost Brookings a few years ago. Forgive my passion on that, but I will say that there are things that are happening. I will be in Washington next week. One of the many meetings I will be at will be about reducing ground fuels in this county with Senator Merkley and Wyden. Um, so we are moving forward with some things. Um, I've got a very loud voice, and I hope you know by now that I'm not afraid to ask anyone for anything, so I will be banging on the door, not knocking.
I appreciate that, sir. You know, I read, I read Senator Wyden's proposal when it came out in the fall, I've seen the money that was put forward in it from the omnibus, from the Farm Omnibus Bill, and yet still, you know, I, I, I don't see ads in the newspaper looking for people to go out and bang a rock and clear roads, you know? This is, the way Mr. Wyden wrote his bill was to put local people to work on local projects, and it's just, you know, the time, the window's passing us by.
But what we have is, we have a Forest Service guy now, first man in history, as far as I know, in history, to put a D-99 CAT on Forest Service land. And he said-
Wilderness.
Or wilderness, and he said, "If it cost me my job, it cost me my job." That's the kind of guy that's working with Larry Ismert and Lee Riddle that's gonna be here next week to start to deal with the plans for this coming fire season.
I understand that.
He's an action guy.
You know, the one thing, you know, we, we keep complaining about the Chetco and how the Chetco was allowed to burn, I'm pretty sure that the people who were involved in managing that and made that call have long since been removed from the positions in Curry County.
Well, isn't that comforting?
Why keep complaining about them? You know, we, it's, you know, we need to move on, we need to move forward.
We need to move on, sir. Mr. Palmer? Thirty seconds, please.
I do not take issue with what Cordell said, it's, my point is simply that that stuff is not in this resolution. If you read through it, you'll see, I mean, nowhere in any of the resolutions proposed here is even the word "fire" mentioned.
Okay.
This is just, I, I don't know what this is about, it's not about what you were talking about. If you wanna take an action, write it up so we can understand it in the, uh, in the words that you were saying, or-
Didn't we decide that you and I agreed pretty much on the nine solutions I presented? And I am working with Jackson County on that and-
I didn't agree with those, Cordell, I agree with three of them.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'm glad to have that clarified.
So do we have a motion on this?
So move, Mr. Chair.
What's your motion? To approve it?
To approve the, uh, resolution to support the Jackson County, uh, both, if I can put it in one motion, uh, public land-
Let them separately, please.
You want them separate, okay. The wildfire, uh-
Threat to Jackson County resolution?
Yes. I'm looking to give you the precise language here, but maybe that will suffice.
Hey, guys, have to forgive me, I got something on my throat today, I can't get it out.
The wildfire threat, yes, to Jackson County, the Curry County resolution, and, uh, any attention, yes.
Do I have a second?
It also is to Curry County threat.
Do I have a second? I'll make a second for comment. I agree with a lot of what you stand on, on this. My problem with this is, as I've, um, been very vocal out in the public about, I, I do think we need to define and refine the language in this, um, and I think when, when and if that can happen in the very near future, I would support this greatly. I just, I have an issue with some of the language in this, and, and again, refining, um, you know, where, where we're gonna go with it, um, for lack of a better word, I'm on fire to get it done. Roll, please.
Mr. Gold?
No.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Chair Pash?
No.
Motion failed.
Number D, public land, natural-caused fires. Do you have a motion?
So move, Mr. Chair, that we, uh, support the Jackson County resolution for, uh, public lands, uh, regulations and policies.
Do we have a second? I'll second. Any further discussion? Roll.
Mr. Gold?
No.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Aye.
Chair Pash?
Aye.
Motion carried, two to one.
E, Vietnam, uh, Vietnam War Memorial Support and Donation?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If, uh, anyone has had a chance to go to the Capitol yet, it's, uh, it's about half-done, it's just an incredible tribute to that, that war, and, um, so, yeah, I put five hundred out there to show that, and I don't know what the sequence of that is, to show this group that we support, especially with the high number of Vietnam veterans we have within our county, uh, and to support the resolution as well. Not a resolution, excuse me, just support and a donation. Would you like me to read more on that?
Commissioner Gold?
I just have one question. I know you wanna do a donation, which is fine, and I'm all for the Vietnam War Memorial, but what budget is this coming from, and that sort of thing?
Maybe you could be creative and make a recommendation there, or maybe we-
I don't know, the county is really strapped in giving donations to other organizations is, even though I'm in support of the Vietnam War Memorial, I, I don't know that it's our, our purview to be giving donations to various organizations.
Well, we sure gave a lot of donations to attorneys the last two years. It failed miserably.
I think we just talked about civility. I'm sorry.
About, what, thirty thousand? So we can't come up with five hundred for, um, I'll tell you what, I can go out and get it, uh, I'm just never surprised. I can go out and get it publicly unless you have support, uh, I think we can find five hundred dollars after, we wasted about, never mind, I'll spare you. So that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Further comments? I, I, I will say this, um, you probably know, if you don't, I will tell you, I am the largest voice, and, and I would say probably in the country for our veterans and the service. Um, my, my issue with this is approving the, the War Memorial Fund, I will personally help with this immediately after this meeting. Um, but to ask all of our taxpayers that there may be a group of, that don't support the War Memorial Fund, to pay from their tax money into it, I, I, I feel it might be inappropriate, um, but I'll tell you what I'll do with you, is I'll work hand-in-hand with you until we get to five hundred private donations, how's that?
I think that's admirable. Uh, can I ask for an emphasis on supporting the effort of Mr. Bates? Uh, make sure that the, you know, I, uh-
I have-
Five hundred from the county, uh, I, I'm just, I'm just processing that we can't find that five hundred. It's, uh-
Well, I, again, I think we can find the five hundred, you know, and my, my issue is, is that our taxpayers, you know, they, they give their taxes to support the county, and I've-
Who in the world doesn't support?
Not to be rude, but they, they, you know, they might not support the memorial fund, so, and I, I don't know that there would be one-tenth of one percent that wouldn't, but it's, it's just a difficult thing to ask all the taxpayers to pay, so-
Fair enough.
I'll walk hand-in-hand with you on it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gold?
I'm going to concur with you, I think it's up to individuals to donate to these, these very good causes. I'm not saying that it's not a good cause, but I think it's an individual, no, uh, donation that should be emphasized, not the county donating to various charities and, and so forth.
As far as this letter, I, of course, one-hundred percent endorse it. Um, anything to do with a memorial to the men and women that have fought and died in this country for all the causes that they've done, I one-hundred percent endorse this.
Fifty-eight thousand soldiers died in that war, some still have never been located. I think it sends a really sad message that we can't come up with five hundred, but again, Mr. Chair, I appreciate your personal willingness to contribute, and I'll match it dollar-for-dollar. Thank you.
All right.
Chair motion to send, submit the letter of support?
Yes.
What donation?
Thank you, Director Schmelzer.
So do we have a motion to, to submit the letter of support?
I so move.
Have a second? I'll second. Roll.
Mr. Gold?
Aye.
Vice, Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Chair Pash?
Aye.
Carry unanimously.
MOU, Memory of Understanding DOC Board of Commissioners and Fair Board. Julie?
Sure, we, um, at the last meeting, we had talked about, uh, committee update, and, um, with the Fair Board, they do have to have us review, we have an MOU that says annually we'll review the MOU.
Mm-hmm.
So it's just before you, um, it's basically the same MOU we've had all along. Council Huddle may have other comments on it, but we're just asking you to approve it.
So, I believe this comes to us with the signatures of the Fair Board as well, the current Fair Board. So they've reviewed it and are submitting it to you for review. Um, there, just one issue that came up, there is a provision that the members of the Fair Board obtain a bond that's in the, in the contract. We've checked with our insurer, and they do provide, they insure both us and the Fair Board, and they do provide the bond for the officers, so that condition is-
So do we have proof of the bond, though? I mean, is there a letter in their policy that says that they are bonded?
I can get you the email from our-
Because I know I'm bonded on, on different things as well, but you have to put up the money for the bond.
Certainly, um, I, I can show you the chain of emails between me and our insurance company and, and whatnot. For instance, we also have a statute that requires our county accountant to be bonded, uh, and then typically, even when they are bonded, the bond is paid for out of the funds of the organization, and the Fair Fund is a county fund. It, it, it kinda gets circular, but bottom line is, I've got assurances I can provide you offline-
Perfect.
-that they, they have the appropriate bonds and coverage for those kind of things.
Thank you, sir. All right.
That's what you call putting your money where your mouth is. I haven't held a hundred-dollar bill in a long time. Forgive the interruption there, Mr. Chair.
So I, I think it'd just be a motion to approve the, the MOU. It, it technically doesn't need approval, but, um, since the Fair Board signed it, it just requires review. If there's, if the Board wants further discussion on this in a workshop to go into details of the MOU, but it's, it's been in place, I'm of the opinion, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. There was the issue of the bond, I think we got that resolved, so I would just request a motion to, to approve.
I'm fine, then, let's just, you know, I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Roll.
Commissioner Gold?
Yes.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Aye.
Chair Pash?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
All righty, advisory ballot question for the Maron, oop, sorry, one, jumped ahead one, Citizens Review Task Force Resignations. Julie Schmelzer.
Okay, so the, um, Board had established a citizen revenue task force, and recently we had several resignations. We're down to three members, so we do not have enough for a quorum. So, staff just needs direction as to whether we draft an order or an ordinance, um, um, basically, um, eliminating the committee, or if we advertise for more replacement positions.
Ms. Gold?
Um, that committee was originally set up to be autonomous, and it was my understanding that, uh, those folks who resigned, resigned because it, there was commissioner intervention there, and I don't know if it would be advantageous to have another committee, because what happens is our commitments, a lot of times, are broken, so I, I don't think we should even have another committee.
So do you wanna speak to that, Mr. Chair?
I will. Actually, after I was elected, I attended that meeting, uh, I believe on two occasions, and, uh, because I was not sworn yet, no one had a problem with me being seated at the table. However, there was, uh, the public was invited to that, and I feel if a commissioner is invited to, or if the public is invited to something, and a commissioner or someone in authority of the county wants to sit in on those meetings in the general audience without comment to take notes, uh, I don't have issue with that. Um, you know, the, isn't it nice that, that committees are there to think of things and, and bring things out, and the general audience sits in the back, and they may come up with an idea that after the meeting's over, they can walk up to one of those committee members and say, "You know what? I know somebody down in Duarte, California, thirty years ago, that had that idea, and this is how they ran with it, and they got it done." So, the more public input that, that any committee can get, I think is fruitful. Um, so therefore, I personally would like to see us retry to have a committee reseated. Ms. Gold?
Let me just add one other comment, a lot of times, we've had these committees, they make recommendations, and I think this particular committee had spent hours and hours coming up with ways to generate revenue in the county, the first being the TLT tax. Another one that came out, from my understanding, was a, a possible restaurant tax. I don't even notice that here, and they had done a lot of research into this, and, and unfortunately, um, some of the ideas have been ignored, and I hate to see public come with an understanding of what's gonna happen, and then it just blows up. It's, it's hard.
Well, again, as we, as we know, committees are just groups of people sitting around what I, what I lovingly call spitballing, um, and to have, uh, things not come to fruition from that is, it's just part of doing business in your time. Um, I will say that the consumption tax that Mr. Boyce has brought up here today, along with Mr. Hitt, I think would be looked on very favorably in the county if it is designated in the right areas, possibly in a food and beverage, or, you know, limiting the scope of, of the depth of that, to me, would be a, a way to get that passed, because I'm certain that everyone in the county now believes that Salem or Washington isn't gonna fix our problems anymore. Rural Oregon is on our own, and we've gotta fight for what we have here and what we believe. We've gotta make it happen, nobody's gonna make it happen for us anymore, and I, anyone that thinks that that's not the truth, I, I feel bad for you, because it is the truth. So, you know, taking different parts of a food and beverage tax and putting it into the consumption tax and modifying it, I mean, those will, those ideas will be moved, so there, there again, you've had a, a group of people that thought of something that will hopefully work its way into, uh, solving the problems of the county, in a very obscure way.
Oh, I didn't interrupt you, Mr. Chair. I really take exemption, exception, excuse me, that somehow my attendance at that meeting was disruptive. I did have two different committee members express to me, immediately followed, they were glad I was there, they knew I was there to represent the interest of the citizens of Curry County. Commissioner Gold mentioned just a moment ago, ideas were ignored, I don't, I'd like to have some clarification on that, um, and just in a, in a general sense, what, what that means, um, so to suggest that I was disruptive is just absolutely not true. Um, so, thank you for your comments there a moment ago.
Okay.
So- So, Commissioner Gold, do you want to elaborate on ideas that were ignored?
I didn't say anything about disruption. Nothing was said on that.
What did you say the very first part there?
I said that the group was to be autonomous. The commissioners were not supposed to be there. That was the agreement.
Yes, ma'am. I voted in opposition to that, and we went through Ms. Director Schmelzer to see if Mr. Pasher, I could attend that meeting.
Okay, well, I'm not going to get in a fight here. I'm, that's fine.
I'm just clarifying for your edification, ma'am. Thank you.
So, what I'd like to make a motion is we move forward to reinstate a revenue task force for this Curry County for the, in the very near future, and if the three that are already on it would like to, just acknowledge by telephone that they would leave their name in the hat, that would be fine, and any, anyone new would need applications, of course. That would be in my motion.
So, just for clarification, just re-advertise to fill the vacancies?
Yes, that's my motion.
And just clarifying, it's not going to be dissolved, eh?
No, we're not dissolved. That's what I said, we're going to re-advertise to reseat. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further comments?
Is this going to, meeting, or is this committee going to be autonomous, or are we going to be, are the commissioners supposed to be at these meetings? What?
Okay, and that's a very good question. What I would, in my motion, I would say that there will be allowed public, the public to be there, and if the committee wants to allow public comment or not, if their chair wants to allow public comment, that's their discretion. But if a commissioner or someone wants to be present in the audience, and if the chair wants that to be silent, then so stated. I can't imagine why they wouldn't want to have a, you know, someone, Julie Schmelzer or one of us at that meeting just to sit and listen without necessarily interjecting in the meeting.
Mr. Chair, it's illegal to say an elected public official can't go to a public meeting. It's ridiculous. Thank you.
Any further comments? Ms. Commissioner Gold?
Let me just say one thing. As long as things are understood ahead of time, I don't have a problem with it, but once a decision is made by the commission, the commission, that means the entirety, should abide by that decision. Otherwise, we become a dysfunctional board, and I think, I've discussed this before, but I think it's important that once a decision is made, we abide by that decision, and that's all I have to say on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's a prior board, once again, committing another board. So, that's why I didn't go to any meetings prior to January 7th, whatever.
Okay, so let's move forward. Let me clarify my motion.
I think that could use some discussion, but thank you anyway.
You want more discussion?
Well, I mean, it's, here we just say we can't bound another board, and yet that's exactly what we did on two occasions that cost a lot of money. I'll stand down. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Gold?
Let me just say the board is bound until some action is taken. That's all I'm going to say.
A lot of work done.
Anyone else? All right. So, let me amend my motion here, that we re, that we advertise to reinstate the revenue task force. Hopefully, the three that are already on it will stay, and we can get some new people. In the advertisement, we may want to clarify that public, the public is welcome to attend, and it will be the Revenue Task Force Board Chair will make the decision if public comments are allowed. That's a pretty long motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any further comment? Roll.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Yes.
Chair Pash.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Mr. Barnes. We are on the advisory ballot question marijuana tax.
I didn't see, was there a statement posted that you were going to put out there to the voters?
Well, we're deciding if we're going to have a question put on the ballot or not is what today is for, but you had a, you had a comment slip filled out on it.
Yes, I did. I just wanted to know if you had one put together or not, and if you don't. If you haven't yet, then once again, I just want to reiterate, like I said at the last meeting, I think it's a, it's a poor idea. It's based on disingenuous numbering, and it's not going to bring in what you, what the county thinks it might, and I just, I'm opposed to it. You know, like I said before, if you're going to tax pot, tax, tax oxy.
Thank you. Ms. Schmelzer?
So, just a comment. When Commissioner DeYoung was here, there was discussion about putting this matter on the ballot as an advisory question, and so I was directed to take the Josephine County example and turn it into the Curry County question. So, that's what I did, and I do have before you, I was able to finish it last night. It basically is worded exactly the same as what you reviewed from Josephine County. I am just waiting to get the actual numbers from the Department of Revenue for Exhibit B, which talks about the amount of money that the county has received so far, but it is, other than that, it's worded the same as the example you reviewed before.
Okay. My issue with this is, the more I've looked into it, is the expense of it and the amount of labor it takes to put this out. I think if we, just like the consumption tax, I think if we work on that now and get it straightened out, I don't really know as we need to, we need to have a question put on the ballot for the expense. Let's, let's get what we want put up right and present it to the public as, as the actual ballot vote, and not, not an advisory question. I don't know what we stand to gain by having a question that, would you vote for this or not? Well, I think we're going to move forward with a consumption tax of some sort. Like you say, how broad it's going to be is, is yet to be determined. What I think to spend the resources to just ask a question, would you vote for this, would you not vote for this, on the marijuana tax and/or the consumption tax, is wasting a lot of our county employee time that I don't think is well-spent.
Mr. Chair, there's also one perhaps unintended consequence, because once we put a measure on a ballot, you talked about county employee time, there's actually limitations and restrictions on what county employees can even do then, so if the board was actually, as you said, contemplating more work by putting it on the ballot, it may actually put us in some kind of a strange timeout where we're losing the ability to work on it. So, it's just an unintended consequence. The election part is really, again, up to the board.
Commissioner Gold?
I spoke with Renee Cullen, I think it was yesterday, and she mentioned that we are not even set up to have an advisory question on the ballot, and the reason we're not is because there has to be an ordinance from the commissioners, and I'm not against an advisory question necessarily, but I think we need to go about it in the proper way. There has to be an ordinance, and I think getting either of these issues as an advisory question on the May ballot is just, would be impossible.
And that's, that's my point. I think we could get an ordinance put in place. It would push the May ballot, so it would be on the September ballot, and I think if we work smartly in the next month or so, I think we can get everything ironed out on what we would want to put on the ballot anyway, so I think we would be wasting time inevitably by doing this on the September ballot for, for a question when we might be able to have the, have it on the ballot for a vote, because, again, I believe that most in the county know that we have to find revenue sources, and there's no big one fix, but if we can massage the language of a consumption bill or a consumption tax and the, and the broadness of it into something that's palatable for everyone in the county, and get the county up to speed, get them fully informed on what's going to be in that and how the money will be spent, I think, I think that's the best approach and the best dollars spent for our county. Commissioner Gold?
I think we ought to form an ordinance for an advisory question that could possibly go on the ballot, not necessarily these questions, but there are times when it would be very advantageous for us to be able to put an advisory question on the ballot. So, I think it would be judicious for us to have that ordinance in place in case there were some type of question that we wanted on the ballot that would be very advantageous for us to have that ordinance in place. These, I don't think, could go on the ballot as an advisory question anyway, because we have to have that ordinance, but I think having an ordinance in place would be helpful for the future.
I just want the board to understand, and I have, you know, talked with Renee about this as well, and she's explained to me the amount of...
Oh, boy.
Oh, she must have been watching. She's explained the amount of work. She's explained the amount of work and money that goes into this, so, again, sometimes having a question, it may be good to have an ordinance, but for the amount of time and effort and cash dollars that it takes to get this on the ballot, I don't know that it's fruitful.
Let me make one other comment before she goes ahead. I think sometimes there are appropriate times to have advisory questions on the ballot, okay? If that is the case, the entity that wants that, I think, should pay for the expense to have that.
Ms. Cullen, your three minutes are on.
Renee Cullen, Curry County Clerk. I have nothing to report. I'm just here in case you had a question.
Okay. Commissioner Boyce?
You probably know, I don't, but I'm sure you know what, when we're only having the May primary, what is the additional cost to have the advisory questions go before the electorate?
So, you've asked a very complicated question.
Hey, I'm sorry. Even in a general sense, what?
So, and that's, and that's hard to just give you a what-if. The cost report is based on administrative rule and by statute, I have a formula is applied, and it's based on how many issues are on the ballot, how many people are registered at the time, how many people have voted at the time. But what you're saying is, we're already paying for the primary election, so that's in our budget. So, what's one more question? Is that what you're asking?
Well, yeah, again, in a general sense.
So...
Shelley?
Um, you're, whenever I say an approximate of something in the future...
You lived, okay, fair enough.
So, but we're talking a few thousand dollars.
How much?
Couple of thousand dollars.
Okay, because I heard twenty-five.
Approximately.
I heard twenty-five thousand, and there may be a better way to have public...
No, that's for the whole thing. That's for the whole thing. That's for the whole county. That's a county-wide election.
Well...
It's twenty-five thousand dollars.
I think you explained that to me several months back on something else.
Well, you're talking about two thousand dollars, but how many hours of staff time as well?
Now, are we, we're talking advisory measures, correct?
Yes.
So, for me, as your county clerk, advisory measures are not binding. It's a survey. So, if you're using the official ballot box for surveys, that, to me, is more of a question to be talked about than, you know, the actual cost of extra measures on a ballot. So, I don't think I can remember when we've had an advisory measure on the ballot to the voters in the thirty-two years I've been here. So, if this is a process you're going to start doing, just remember that it is not binding. It is just a survey, and you're using the official election office's resources for a survey. When, if I get it, if I understand it right, even if you do the survey, you do the question as advisory, you still have to turn around again and ask the question officially. Is that correct?
Right, you would have to take a vote on an, on an actual ordinance or a tax or a, you know, an ability, an ordinance establishing a tax, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Gold, did you have some...
Mm-mm.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yes, that's okay. Two things. This is incredibly invaluable data that we have never done before, and I think it, we don't spend money just so we can show leadership, but to the extent we can get that kind of information, especially on an issue this big, in addition, the public awareness aspect, if people, you know, they already voted once on recreational marijuana, what, four years ago, three years ago, whatever, okay? And that was, that was fairly, by a pretty good margin. I just want to read something real quick. Three sentences. Marijuana, Mental Illness, and Violence by Alex Berensen. Author, Tell Your Children the Truth About Marijuana, Mental Illness, and Violence. Okay? There it is. Incredibly well-educated. Do all people use marijuana violent? Heavens no. And we've talked about the medical aspect, and there's, there's greater information coming on that all the time. But to let the public know that we see this, even though it has been less intense than we may have predicted a couple of years ago, a lot of it based on what was going on in other Southern Oregon counties, you know, I, my preference right now, if it's a couple thousand dollars, and I'm not going to hold you to that, to say to the public, where do you stand on this? How should we be leading in this issue? Can we bring you to the table to, to work towards any possible future problems that maybe we're not even aware of now? So, yeah, I would rather have the advisory...
Commissioner Gold?
Let me just say one thing about advisory versus survey. When you send out surveys, just a normal survey, most people do not respond. If you put this on a ballot, you would get a better response, and you would have a better feeling of what the public actually wanted. Even though it costs a few extra dollars, you may save a whole lot of dollars later on as a result of knowing exactly what the voters want.
So, I have another question for you, Ms. Cullen. Given that we don't have the final numbers from Ms. Schmelzer yet, let's say we could get those in the next week. We don't know what the numbers are on the marijuana, correct?
On the revenue, potential revenue? We do not know the exact numbers. There's also discussion at the state level as to whether or not the proposed bill is going to change, and, you know, one idea that I heard recently, instead of collecting it as presented by Mr. DeYoung, that perhaps it be collected only if the product is leaving the county, crossing a county line. At that time, it would be taxed. So, there's some, you know, the formula isn't decided yet. It hasn't been put out to the voters yet. My understanding was this was to gauge whether there was interest in this county even pursuing this.
So, being on the time constraints we are currently in, is this going to be for the September ballot, or can we still make the May?
So, the special district election that we're working on right now, the deadline for you all to present measures to us is Friday.
Tomorrow, oh, yeah, Friday.
I can't see this happening before...
No, you have to have a special ordinance to get...
Right, we have to get the ordinance first, so what I'm saying is if you want to...
We're talking two meetings.
If you want to have an advisory question, it'll be on September ballot.
Okay.
So, then it wouldn't be able to be voted on until the following May. Am I correct?
If you're going to put an advisory measure on the next applicable election, I don't have that date in front of me. It's September. I'm not sure exactly.
September.
So, that would be the date that you wanted to put the measure to the, the advisory measure to the voters?
Yes.
Okay, so you have September.
And then from that, then it would, if, if we then did decide to do it, because the, you got a significant question answered from the public, it would not be able to
So, the next special district election is November, and I'm not sure, does your, this taxing measure have to go on a primary or a general, because that's not the, that's not the season that we're in right now. So, I...
Commissioner Boyce?
Just quick confirmation from Council Huddle. We do have to do that ordinance.
Thank you. So, it's an Attorney General opinion that before you can put an advisory measure to the voters, you need to have a law in place, your own county law, your own law, that authorizes you to do so, because the state law doesn't have a separated allowance for advisory questions. The two examples that were given to us, Josephine County and Coos County, both of those counties have on their books an ordinance that authorizes them to give an advisory question to the voters. Also, voters, I might have said voters, also other entities do, other cities. And then, historically, we had such an ordinance on our books way back when, and we repealed it when we codified ordinances, and it's possible, I don't know why we repealed it, maybe we didn't use it that much, but, so, we did have that. It's an Attorney General opinion based on the status of the law. There's a statute that says you can put a question as a measure, and there's, there's no case law on it, but it seems to be the standard practice to have an ordinance to authorize you to give an advisory question. We don't have such an ordinance, so there's, you know, an argument that we need that ordinance.
Is that old ordinance thus appealed available, readily available?
Right, yes. I think, you know, it's, it's not a very lengthy ordinance, and it would have to be adopted. So, in theory, you could adopt an emergency ordinance in one reading by unanimous vote, and it's effective on adoption. Then you would have that ordinance in place, and then you could, you'd be over that hurdle, but it doesn't, it doesn't get you past the other non-technical legal hurdles that have been discussed today, so...
Could you reinstate the old ordinance in one meeting?
Right, it would be an ord, we'd just need to adopt an emergency ordinance doing so, and that requires, you know, we'd have to have it, we could, it would probably take, it would come up, Julie, what's, what's that last item on our, sorry, Director Schmelzer, what's that last item on our agenda? It says other matters, not on the agenda.
Yes.
So, we would bring it... So we would bring it in at the end. We'd bring in the old ordinance. It would come for a reading as an emergency ordinance. If the board adopted it, then after you had the ordinance in place, you'd still be considering these questions again that, you know, the clerk has been letting you know about, so...
Can I ask a question?
Ms. Schmelzer, go ahead.
And I don't know, I think I glanced at that ordinance, I think it was eighty-three, I'm not sure what year that was, and I think it read something like, even if you had the ordinance, you still had to have public hearings on whether or not what measure it is and whether or not it was applicable to your, to the board through the ordinance.
I hadn't read it so clearly as that, but I think it did require that. The part about it is, we might have looked at both Josephine County and Coos County's ordinances as well, and they might not have that public hearing element. I think that was a, so again, it's a matter of local legislation, so everyone can do it differently. But yes, our past ordinance had a requirement for public hearings. We had looked at the other two models of the ordinances from the other counties, and I don't know if they had the public hearing requirement in there, so...
Well, could you, during the lunch break, make an emergency ordinance on this to put at the end of the meeting under others?
Well, if that's what the board directs, yes. And then, by the way, I think the natural consequent, well, it would just be consensus to direct me to do that, and then, yes, you'd have to do unanimous. My hunch would be then you would just continue the two items we're talking about right now, the marijuana measure and the consumption tax question.
Till after.
Till after that. So that's just, I think, how it would happen step by step.
Commissioner Gold?
Could we discuss these two questions before, and if a motion is made, it would be contingent upon that ordinance being asked?
I see. Trying to just get stuff, I'm sure, Commissioner Gold.
I'm just...
Thank you.
Oh, I'm not supposed to hit you.
No, that's okay.
All right. So we, yeah, we've got about ten minutes left before the lunch break, so why don't we go ahead and discuss the question? Can we have a reading of them? Do you have the marijuana question there?
We can do it by title only, or we can read the entire thing, but...
Let me go through and find it on my sheet.
Was this handed out at our places, Ms. Schmelzer, or no?
Yes.
Would you like me to read it, Mr. Chair?
It was given to John Huddle's legal assistant.
Okay.
Do you have more questions for me?
No, thank you.
All right.
So the way, do you want me to proceed?
Yes, please.
Okay. So the way it is written was, whereas ORS, first of all, it's in the matter of referring to Curry County voters at the May 21st, 2019 election in an advisory question on marijuana taxation. Whereas ORS 254.005 parent six parent small e parent defines measure as a proposition or question, and whereas the Curry County Board of Commissioners board desires to submit to the electors at duly scheduled elections advisory questions on matters of interest to the county. Whereas Curry County residents are affected by the production, processing, transporting, and selling of marijuana and its products within the county. And whereas the board has determined that the electors of Curry County should have the opportunity to express their opinions as to whether the county should take steps to tax the production of marijuana. Now, therefore, the Curry County Board of Commissioners hereby resolves, one, the advisory question in the ballot title attached hereto as Exhibit A shall be referred to the electors of the county for their yes or no vote. Two, the ballot title and explanatory statement attached hereto and marked as Exhibits A and B are approved for submission to the Curry County Elections Officer, County Clerk, for the May 21st, 2019 election. The Curry County Legal Council will certify Form SEL 801, the notice of county measure election as required by law. For the following certification, the Curry County Legal Council shall cause to be delivered to the county clerk this resolution ballot title, Form SEL 801, and explanatory statement for the voters pamphlet for further action as required by law for placement on the May 21st, 2019 election ballot. Five, the county clerk shall give notice of receipt of the ballot title and notice of electors' right to petition for review of the ballot title as provided by law, done and dated this February 20th, 2019. And then Exhibit A, the caption, Advisory Question on Marijuana Production Tax. Question, in your opinion, should Curry County be able to tax the production of recreational and medical marijuana? Ballot summary, the outcome of the election on this advisory question will not be binding. It will provide information to the Board of County Commissioners while the board formulates policy.
That's good, Julie. Yeah, the rest of that is just state laws and stuff.
Then Exhibit E?
Yes.
In 1998, Oregon, it goes through the history of passing Measure 67. Since the passage of Measure 67 in ninety-one, the Oregon Legislature has approved statutes that authorize creation of rules and taxation, and it goes through the revenue that the county has seen since then. State law currently prevents counties from taxing marijuana production. In December of 2017, the Association of Oregon Counties recommended state law be changed so that five southwestern counties could tax marijuana production. Subsequently, Douglas withdrew from that proposal, and Lane County joined in. Following legislative approval, voters of each county could then decide whether to impose such a tax. Property tax rates would not be impacted. The state currently collects annual fees for medical and recreational marijuana, so they would continue to collect this tax as well. The outcome of the election on this advisory question will not be binding. It will provide information to the Board of County Commissioners while the board formulates policy.
And then the language on the, on the consumption tax is very similar as to the legal aspect of it. And then the question for the ballot measure would be, in your opinion, should Curry County tax goods and services purchased in the county? Exemptions would apply. And that would be that ballot measure question. And then that goes on to have an explanatory statement for the voters pamphlet on where those funds would be directed, which would probably, probably be able to be worked on before the ballot actually went out, so...
Yes. That would be pretty important. Excuse me.
With the consumption tax advisory question, what it does is Exhibit B reiterates basically what was presented this morning in that presentation as far as where the funds would be directed and what percentage they would be directed to.
Well, again, I will say this. I will say that I think I would prefer to move forward with just the ballot measure itself and not the question. We could get it on the earlier ballot that way, and it would give us still enough time, I think, to put together a task force or a group of people to decide how things are going to be done, especially on the consumption tax. And I would also like to look into the medical marijuana end of this as part of a special section that we could talk about further. It's, of course, that's, that would be the one vote. The rest of the board would have the choice on that, but that's my opinion. Commissioner Gold?
So I have one question. If this, these two advisory votes are supposed to be put on the ballot or get to Renee by Friday, can they be amended? Because I'm looking at some of this stuff, and I'm not sure that all of it should go on the ballot as written. I don't know whether it could be amended or not. I have no idea.
What I would recommend is a special meeting on Thursday or, Thursday or Friday morning. We do have to do a 24-hour notice for the meeting, but I would think that gives us time to look it over a little closer and to do any research that we need versus making a quick decision on it.
I think that would be very advisable.
Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you. I'll be calling in, but I can explain why. I want them on the ballot just by personal preference, and I think the public opinion on these, even in a, in a starting, general sense, would, for a thousand dollars each, give or take, I think it's good business for where our county is headed. Thank you.
Well, then, why don't we make a motion to Council Huddle?
I think you just take the items one at a time. Is there on the agenda? I think the first one is the marijuana referral, and then the...
Well, we're going to put these after, though, because now we're going to ask you to do an emergency ordinance for the vote.
Well, what we could do is say contingent upon getting an ordinance for an advisory ballot question.
All right, contingent upon. Go ahead, make your motion.
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept the advisory ballot measure for marijuana tax based on, or contingent upon getting a ordinance for an advisory vote for the county.
Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Any further comments?
Commissioner Gold, would that include inserting the updated numbers from Department of Revenue?
That would be good, yes.
Any further comments? Roll.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Chair Pash?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right. And then we have aye, advisory ballot question on the consumption tax. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to put on the advisory ballot the question of, one, discuss the pros and cons of a consumption tax, two, legal and procedural issues, and three, discuss the timeline for... No, we just did that. So just based, there's into my motion, sir.
Is it contingent upon getting a...
Yes.
Ordinance? For an advisory vote?
You said yes.
Oh, okay.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Roll.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Chair Pash?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
So before we break for lunch, I'd like to recognize, see Mr. Roy Davis, the chair of the Port of Brookings Harbor Board, sitting here, sir? Thank you for joining us. We are at lunch. We will reconvene at 1:00.
We will be going into exec session at 1:00 as well, so that may take an hour or so.
Well, we still have the director's report and then commissioners' updates, so we will be in executive session after those.
Okay, thank you.
Well, actually, after the 2:00. No, we'll get this done. We'll get that. Because I'm, you're only going to get three minutes on this. Well, the digital is shocking.
If yours is the next big idea, and you need the right place to fine-tune it, build it, launch it, if you're only your best when you can play more than you work, if inspiration comes from the outside, you belong in Curry County. The westernmost point of the land you love and the edge between familiar and uncharted. Break the pattern. Be where the airports are as close as the beaches, and industry and recreation never cease to amaze. Dock, dive, and dine in a single day, and never lose your connection. This is the threshold of the West. Live where you can do you and do it well, at the farthest point from ordinary. Curry County, living on the edge.
We have these parks which are set up to protect and preserve biodiversity. That's challenging under any circumstances. But it certainly is almost impossible if you don't know what the actual biodiversity that's in your park or the area that you're trying to conserve is.
Bioblitz is a celebration of biodiversity. Biodiversity is the variety of life in an area. We don't know how much life and what types of life are here at Crater Lake National Park. The big, obvious things, we know about. But a bioblitz is where we go out and look for a particular type of organism. This year, we're looking for beetles, or the order Coleoptera.
The wealth of biodiversity that are in these parks, 99% of it is something that could fit in your hand.
We can't save what we don't know exists. So if there's a beetle species out there that's very important and we don't know about it, we can't do anything to help it. That is the ultimate goal of the bioblitz. It's a way that citizens can come here. We have volunteers that are here who are actually giving this information. They're using their time to help the scientists build a greater picture of what kind of beetles are here in this park.
Getting this sort of baseline data of what biodiversity is there not only shows us what's there, which is just intrinsically interesting for its own purpose, but it also begins to set a baseline. And that baseline dataset is what we then can use, and not just scientists, but the general public and those land managers, the stakeholders in that bioblitz, can use those observations then on into the future to understand if things are changing.
It's not so much about counting number of species, it's more about seeing a fuller picture of the biodiversity. And the biodiversity is the variety of different types of organisms, different types of species.
I do believe that in their past bioblitzes, that they have expanded the number of things they now had recorded from the park, but also confirmed that some of the things that were reported historically are still present. So even if it's not a new discovery for the park, it still creates another piece of data that tells us, yes, that thing still lives here and is still thriving or maybe struggling, but we begin to learn something about it. I think that has an intrinsic value to the park for its long-term future, but it also just has an intrinsic social value. When you ask questions about why do we have these parks, and there's lots of ways to answer that question, but one of them is that the parks are these areas where we, where we go to appreciate the wildlife there. And this is a way of tapping into some of that wildlife at all sorts of different levels. One of the key things besides the biology that's involved in these bioblitzes is the interaction with the public and the opportunity to educate the public about the biodiversity around them.
The citizen scientists are here working alongside professional scientists, and that allows them not just to connect with science here at the park, but connect with the greater scientific community. It's a real positive thing. We see all ages coming here, and they're just acting like kids, out searching for bugs, but they're doing real science at the same time. It's a great connection between this amazing resource and the people that live around
One of the things I really appreciate about our entire region is that we embrace who we are, and I think that's what unifies us. Once the timber and fishing industries collapsed, it took us a long time to get back on our feet. People didn't quite grasp the idea that once these jobs left, they weren't going to get other family wage jobs, and it crippled us.
Things were getting really dire, so we just thought that this was an opportunity to maybe look at that public land a little differently and how it could bring more dollars into our region.
The Wild Rivers Coast is so unique because there are more wild and scenic rivers here than anywhere else in the lower forty-eight states. The scenic beauty is just amazing. There's so many different places to go, from the national forest down to the protected ocean, and it's just a really special place.
I guess I didn't really know how special it was, though, until I moved away to Portland and came back and saw all the potential here.
We're uncrowded, we're unspoiled, and we're a little difficult to get to, but my God, once you come here, you fall in love.
We just thought if we could pull people to come into this Wild Rivers Coast and stay longer and explore a little farther into our backcountry, there was a lot of opportunities for them to experience.
I think our whole future is at stake here. This area is ready to go, we just need to give it a little kick in the butt.
I'm going to be honest, when the Rural Tourism Studio came here, I was skeptical because I didn't see far enough ahead that we actually could collaborate regionally, and I'm pleasantly surprised. It's been amazing.
The Rural Tourism Studios was the first time we were able to come together as a region to talk about the future of our economy.
If we can have a strong tourism economy in this area, it's going to benefit the whole community.
We have to rely on ourselves, and I think through this program, it's sort of opened our eyes to what we could do when we work together. Community leaders really focused on three areas. Outdoor recreation, food and agricultural tourism, and really building community relationships.
In our area, a lot of the food that's grown all gets shipped away, and so now we're realizing that we can capture some of that local food that's grown here. The Eat Fresh and Local Action Team has hosted a series of networking events, bringing together the area growers with the area vendors so that we could have more local food available to the visitors to our area. And now we're... And now we're seeing more local food in our grocery stores, in our restaurants, and we have a new local food co-op.
We created a farm trail from Bandon to Port Orford. We did 9 U-Pic farms, and it just gained traction and people loved it.
Langloes is less than 500 people. It's very small. So we have to bring in tourists. And being on the farm trail, even though it's just beginning, has really helped do that. We really want to make it a destination for anybody. My mom and I began Dragonfly Farm just 3 years ago. When I found out that I could grow a seed and turn that into food, it was like, oh my gosh, why wouldn't you do this? I just quit my day job and I just signed the paper to be an official co-owner of the farm. This is what I want to do for the rest of my life and grow with the community.
Out of the Outdoor Recreation Action Team, we came up with a series of maps that show where the best places to go recreate are. We know where we're going to send people now, and we got a great map that shows all the best places to go see.
For us to get a mapping project done to this extent is pretty impressive. We're patting ourselves on the back. I don't know what anybody else is, but we're doing it.
From that, we decided that there was some places that needed help, so we came up with a mountain bike plan. And we also worked on designating a state scenic bikeway. The Outdoor Recreation Action Team was also looking at how we can make scuba diving better in this area. So we came up with the idea for a scuba fill station. So now people that want to come and dive in this area, they can dive for multiple days because they can get their tanks filled up again. When I started the Rural Tourism Studio, my business, South Coast Tours, was really small. And now we've grown to about 5 or 6 guides, and we're doing tours all over from Brookings all the way up to Coos Bay.
Overall, tourism is on the rise here. We've had a bang up last 2 years, and it's like a breath of fresh air down here.
My hope for the area is that we still keep that sense of place.
Loving a place to death is a big concern that I have, and it's a balance. We're going to promote tourism, but we want to do it in a sustainable way. One of the biggest reasons that this area has been so successful since the Tourism Studio is the people that are involved. We have a lot of great, motivated, smart people who understand the need to promote tourism in the right way. And it's really all about the people.
When you live in a rural community like we do, from Bandon down to Brookings, and you're strapped for cash, relationships are crucial.
As a community, I think you need to come together and find out what your mission and goals are collectively. Then you can work into smaller groups, knowing that you have the backing of the whole community behind you.
As long as everybody's just super excited about it and passionate about what they're doing and they can work together, then anything's possible.
Own what you have and don't try to be something that you're not. It's going to be hard. It's going to take a long time, so roll up your sleeves and just dig in with an open mind.
National Parks are one of America's crowning achievements. After all, it was in this country that the idea of setting areas aside for preservation was born. They are a symbol of democracy and exist as places where one can appreciate the beauty and complexity of the natural world, free of human influence. In the past, national parks faced challenges brought on primarily by the industries and practices that threatened them. Today, similar challenges persist as well as some new ones. High up in the Cascades, Crater Lake National Park remains a pristine natural area enjoyed by visitors from throughout the world. But in recent years, new circumstances have come to endanger the ecosystem of the park. Invasive plant species are beginning to spread and threaten the park's natural biodiversity. An invasive species is an organism that did not originate in an ecosystem and is often introduced by humans. In recent years, Crater Lake National Park biologists have documented a rise in the number of non-native plant species found within the park. Invasive plant species have various ways of spreading throughout Crater Lake National Park. Roads that have been built create pathways for seeds that may stick on tires and get thrown to the side of the road. From the roadways, visitors come from far and wide to see one of the world's natural wonders. With each visitor, the risk of introducing new species also increases. Many invasive plant species have evolved sophisticated methods of distribution through the development of various adaptations to their seeds. These adaptations allow some species to let the wind and even animal life do all the heavy lifting for them. As seeds needle their way through clothing and animal fur, they are carried and then dropped in various places around the park. There are many reasons why new species are entering the park at an increasing rate. One of the factors responsible are the effects brought on by climate change. Due to warming winters, the snow-dominated season of Crater Lake National Park is becoming shorter. Snowpack, that is normally around for most of the year, shortens the period of humid impacts, such as high levels of summer visitation and infrastructure maintenance and enhancements. With climate change increasing the frequency and severity of drought and lengthening the snow-free period, the factors that are disturbing the natural environment are amplifying. Snow melt, that would linger for most of the year, is melting much sooner than usual. Snowpack acts as a barrier to both plant and animal species. Native plant species have adapted to this environment and are used to completing their life cycles during short growing seasons. With the lengthening of growing seasons, native plant species are now vulnerable to increasing competition from invasive plant species. The risk of forest fires increases with rising temperatures as well. As growing seasons lengthen, so do fire seasons. Areas affected by forest fires open up new habitats for invasive plants to move in, creating areas where non-native plants can find solid footing in the competition against their native neighbors. Newly introduced annual grasses fill spaces of forests and meadows and act as a medium for fires, allowing them to spread farther and more easily than before. This means that not only are invasive plant species altering the existing environment, they create a domino effect that can speed up the process of change in the park. In the last 3 years, 25 non-native plant species have been discovered. With every coming season, these numbers are expected to increase. Amid growing challenges and limited resources, the invasive vegetation management team has been forced to prioritize the most aggressive species in the park. These Crater Lake National Park biologists are controlling non-native thistles from a remote area inside the western boundary of the park. These thistles were discovered late in the season, and park biologists are removing the seed heads so they will not spread farther and establish more infestation sites. Giving how large an area these plants can envelop, controlling invasive plants can be a meticulous process, but it is the best way to ensure that these plants aren't able to spread further into the park. Road sides are another area of focus as they create literal highways for invasive plant species to take hold. By controlling invasive plants near the park boundary and along roadside, park biologists hope to reduce the amount of species entering and spreading in order to protect and maintain the natural state of the park.
What draws you to the Oregon coast? Is it the green and blue surf on a brilliant sunny day or angry boiling waves during a raging winter storm? Do you prefer quiet coves or powerful breakers churning the sand? How about sand castles? Do you come for the rising tide or the setting sun to marvel at whales gliding through the sea or flying in the sky? Reasons to travel the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are as far-reaching as your imagination. This is a spectacular part of Oregon that traces the entire coastline along Highway 101, guiding you to the sea and away again, to coastal towns, big and small, lowland marshes, and breathtaking overlooks. It's a long byway stretching from the mouth of the Columbia River to the California border, 363 miles in all, of some of the most unblemished awe-inspiring seascapes you'll find anywhere. In addition to its designation as a scenic byway, Highway 101 in Oregon also has been selected as an all-American road. That means when you come here, you will experience one of only 31 roads considered to be the best of the best in America.
You know, when people come to the Oregon coast, they're really astonished how beautiful it is. And what separates it from many of the other places in North America that are coastal is how undeveloped it is. And that's because Oregon had a very far-sided land use program back in the 1970s. We have all these wonderful state parks along the scenic byway that are perfect places to stop and enjoy nature in a relatively unspoiled way.
From the north, you begin in Astoria, the first permanent European settlement in the Pacific Northwest. It's a genuine maritime community with ship traffic from around the world seeking harbor up the Columbia. The official State Maritime Museum of Oregon sits here on the river. Beautiful Victorian houses dot the hillside. And standing 600 feet above sea level is the 125-foot Astoria Column. It features a hand-painted spiral frieze that would stretch over 500 feet if unwound. Heading south, you'll find the community of Seaside, a popular vacation spot that offers miles of public beaches, an oceanfront promenade, and a downtown core packed with restaurants, shops, and even a beach-type arcade. Cannon Beach is home to one of Oregon's most photographed natural wonders, Haystack Rock. Get your shots from the beach or take a short drive up to Ecola State Park and look down on this 235-foot work of art. The picturesque small town is filled with art galleries, shops, and cafes. Ready for more? 10 miles to the south, this is the view from Cape Falcon, you're 700 feet above the Pacific. Here, the Pacific Coast Byway has been carved out of Neaconne Mountain and held in place by stone walls built in the 1930s by craftsmen in the Civilian Conservation Corps. Upon descending the mountain, the highway drifts inward around Tillamook Bay to Tillamook, the unofficial dairy capital of Oregon. The verdant valley of dairy farms in this area produces 25 million gallons of milk annually. Much of that is processed into natural cheddar cheese. And near more than 800 miles of navigable waters, Tillamook is a crossroads for North Coast recreation. From here, you owe it to yourself to veer off Highway 101 to explore the Three Cape Scenic Loop. This drive places you right at the beach, beginning with Cape Mirs, home to the shortest lighthouse in Oregon. Nine lighthouses stand sentinel along Oregon's coastline. They're monuments to our maritime heritage, towering links to the past and as much a part of the rugged Oregon coastal landscape as any offshore monolith. The Cape Mirs Lighthouse was first illuminated in 1890. Oregon's oldest lighthouse is at Cape Blanco, the westernmost point in the state. It was commissioned in 1870 to aid shipping generated by gold mining and the lumber industry. The 93-foot-high Yaquena Head Lighthouse is the tallest in Oregon. Today, its automated light continues to aid navigation at the entrance to Yaquena Bay. Many of the lighthouses are open to the public. Most happen to be excellent places to view nesting seabirds and offshore sea life. Tide pools, those rocky areas between high and low tides, support unique and diverse plants and animals. Vast amounts of colorful, otherworldly creatures wait to be discovered. But while cautiously, these organisms are tough enough to withstand the pounding surf but are utterly vulnerable to human activity. Wildlife and sea life abound on the coast.
There are 6 national wildlife refuges along the Oregon coast. The Pacific Coast Scenic Byway bisects these refuges or goes alongside them. It provides you the opportunity to see a wide variety of abundant wildlife, including seabirds, seals and sea lions, deer and elk, and many other wildlife.
Cape Kewanda lies at the southern end of the Three Cape Scenic Loop, near the town of Pacific City. Here, you'll find a second Haystack Rock on the byway. Hike up the dune to marvel at stunning views of sandstone formations as they turn yellow, gold, or even red in the changing sunlight. If your timing is right, you'll spot one or 2 of the Dory fleet sprint onto the beach after a day of fishing. How's this for a dinner setting? Restaurants along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway accommodate just about any taste. Many serve an ocean view with every meal. Up and down the coast, you'll find seafood, of course, but don't limit yourself just because you're by the water. The central coast begins around Lincoln City, which is one of the larger communities on the byway. It has a reputation for being windy and was recognized by Kite Lines Magazine as the best place to fly a kite in North America. It was incorporated from several small towns and, as a result, offers a sandy beach that is 7 and 1/2 miles long. A number of small state parks lie nestled along the ocean between Lincoln City and Newport. Stop, get out of your car, and take in the commanding views that are there, right next to your all-American road. Depot Bay boasts the world's smallest navigable harbor, 6 square acres in all. A seawall runs the length of the downtown, so everywhere you go, you're rewarded with a dramatic view of the Pacific. It's considered Oregon's whale-watching capital, with thousands making their way past Oregon each fall and spring. Fishing and whale-watching excursions regularly set sail from this little harbor. Leaving Depot Bay, you'll soon find yourself at Cape Fowlweather, a basalt outcropping that looms 500 feet above the water. It was here in 1778, British Captain James Cook first sighted the mainland of North America on the Pacific coast. A fierce storm that almost put an end to his expedition earned this rugged stretch of coastline its name. Coastal weather can change by the hour. You will find a lot of wet days, but rain can become blue sky with white clouds in an afternoon. Mist kissing the headlands burns away, or storms can last for days. Some people come for those storms. Whether you find sunbursts of happiness or cloud cover like a quilt, there's always a reason to come back. Like Lincoln City, Newport is one of the larger towns on the byway. The historic bayfront on the north side of Yaquena Bay hosts one of Oregon's largest commercial fishing fleets. It has a busy, genuine working waterfront field with fish plants and boats coming and going from as far away as Alaska. On the south side of the bay is the Oregon Coast Aquarium. Share waters beneath the ocean with sharks and rays, and don't miss the sea otters at mealtime.
Now, all 4 of our otters were rescued otters. They were found out in the wild.
For the next 50 miles, your trip along Highway 101 hugs the coast. Many more state parks offer opportunities to Many more state parks offer opportunities to stop and take in outstanding vistas, crashing waves, and offshore rock formations. Two small towns of note are Waldport and Yawhats. Waldport sits on Alsea Bay where fishing, clamming, and crabbing are popular. The 40-mile stretch south of Waldport marks steep headlands, jagged volcanic outcrops, and jaw-dropping scenery, the rugged edge of the Oregon coast. Yawhats is a quiet, unhurried artist town just a couple of miles north of Cape Perpetua. Drive to the top of this bluff, and you'll be 800 feet above the water. On a clear day, you can see 70 miles of Oregon coastline. Drive past Hacita Head Lighthouse to the Sea Lion Caves. A quick elevator ride 200 feet down puts you in America's largest sea cave, the year-round home of wild stellar sea lions. Rugged cliffs give way to graceful beaches as you approach Florence. In the spring, be on the lookout for wild rododendrons along the road sides. Similar to Newport, you'll find an historic old-town commercial district along the Sayuslaw River. Florence is the gateway to the Oregon Dunes National Recreation Area, a 47-mile sandbox of windsculpted sand dunes towering 500 feet above sea level. These are the largest expanse of coastal sand dunes in North America. Reed's Port is at the center of the Oregon Dunes, but you can do more than ride a dune buggy or motorcycle. A short three miles east of town on Highway 38, more than 100 Roosevelt elk reside at the Dean Creek Elk Viewing Area. Early mornings or just before dusk are the best times to photograph the herd. Paying homage to Oregon's timber heritage, Reed's Port hosts an annual chainsaw sculpting championship, a time to watch three-dimensional artwork come to life right before your eyes. Mountains of sand continue at Winchester Bay. You'll also find an active marina here. It's a great place to try your hand at crabbing or take a charter for salmon or bottom fishing. The dunes end and you enter the coast's largest urban area, at Coos Bay. It has the deepest natural harbor between Seattle and San Francisco. Foreign vessels sail under the massive McCullough Bridge. You may have noticed dotted along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are many beautiful and iconic bridges. The Megler Bridge in Astoria, Yaquena Bay Bridge in Newport, Alsea Bay Bridge in Waldport, Sayuslaw River Bridge in Florence, and the magnificent McCullough Bridge in Coos Bay are works of art in their own right. Charleston is slightly off the byway at the mouth of the bay. It was once an old waterfront fishing village and has become a commercial and sport fishing center. From here, the Charleston to Bandon tour route offers another side trip off the byway. It's a wonderful way to explore a variety of natural Pacific coast beauty in a number of settings: beaches, vistas, gardens, and more. Giant sea stacks, a tiny lighthouse, and an old town await you in Bandon. Do you like to golf? This remote area on the Oregon coast has not one but three of the most stunning and challenging golf courses in the world. As you drive south of town, look for brilliant red bogs in the fall. You're passing through the cranberry capital of Oregon. After a trek through forests and farmlands, you'll reach Port Orford. The Wild Coast has begun. You're in the most westerly city in the continental United States, and you've reached some of the most awesome scenery on the byway. Here, you can watch a fishing fleet launched by Crane in one of only six dolly ports in the world. Port Orford covers less than two square miles. It's similar to many communities that call this All-American Road home. Small in size, still with a lot to offer. Like Manzanita, with a vibrant business district and beautiful setting at the base of Nea County Mountain, you can board a fishing charter out of Garibaldi, swim in freshwater lakes near Dune City, catch world-class windsurfing at Pistol River. There's little development from Port Orford to Gold Beach, outlet for the renowned Rogue River. Feel like going for a ride? Jet boat excursions run from May into October up this wild and scenic river. Or maybe a midday walk on an uncrowded beach is more your speed. The last dozen miles of the Pacific Coast Byway leading into Brookings save some of the best for last. Treat yourself to frequent stops along the Samuel H. Boardman Scenic Corridor. Short hikes reward you with the best views in this shining stretch of coastline. Walk, relax, and be amazed along the coves and the crashing surf. The world's northernmost redwood grove is eight miles from the mouth of the Chetco River in Brookings. So, you've toured nature's finest art museum. You've dined elegantly, hung out with sea lions, unwound like you wish you could every day. What else is there to do? Step back in history near Astoria, ride a horse along the waves near Florence, pet a baby tiger near Bandon, hike a trail, sample gourmet cheese, eat fresh-caught crab, watch a sunset.
When you come to the Oregon coast and walk on the beaches or go to the headlands and go to the small coastal towns, you really can commune with nature, and you don't have huge numbers of people, but you're also able to take in one of America's last great unspoiled seascapes.
So what draws you to the Oregon coast? What favorite places lure you back again and again? Each visit is different. The ocean, the sky, the light, and the experience always continue to amaze. Shouldn't you be there?
We've got a lot of obvious hazards here, but I think one of the greatest hidden hazards is that the weather can change really fast. It can be a total bluebird sunny day, next thing you know, the clouds will roll in, reduce visibility to almost nothing. You'll get driving snow, blasting wind, and it can create a whiteout, and that's really dangerous to be out in, especially with the edge of the caldera right here.
There are also hazards such as avalanches and cornices throughout the park. A cornice is a formation of snow created by wind. It often forms over steep slopes and can be overhanging. They can easily be broken through if you're not paying attention.
Most of our popular skiing areas and our popular snowshoeing areas are either on or below avalanche terrain. So you want to be aware of the edges, you want to be aware whether you're above or below avalanche terrain. It's incredibly hazardous, and we do get avalanches all the time here.
Unstable snow cornices can kill. Cornices are difficult to detect and can collapse at any time. Stay 100 feet, 30 meters, back from edge of the caldera. Trees can be dangerous in deep winter snow. Tree wells are large cavities around trees that can be three to 10 feet deep. People can become trapped in tree wells and die. Tree bombs are large clumps of snow and ice that fall from tree branches. Tree bombs can injure or kill a person. Use map and stay on the trails. Don't venture off-trail unless you have a plan and are prepared to rescue yourself. Search and rescue response may not take place until the following day. Stay with a group and let a responsible person know your plans. Leave a detailed itinerary with someone you know. If there is an emergency, they might be the only person who can tell the National Park Service where you are.
There's something about having land and sea. Never having to choose between digging in or looking out. Here, you can go where the spirit or the wind moves you. To the tops of the trees, along secluded beaches, or into more wild and scenic rivers than anywhere else in the western United States. We're the closest place to the sunset while still keeping your feet dry and a destination where anyone can begin. We share more than we keep, so you can see more than you imagined. This is a place you have to touch, hold, and feel to believe. The entire shoreline of the West Coast's best coast is open to you, and playgrounds made of forests are waiting for you. Escape to Curry County, and don't leave anything out.
We've got a lot of obvious hazards here, but I think one of the greatest hidden hazards is that the weather can change really fast. It can be a total bluebird sunny day, next thing you know, the clouds will roll in, reduce visibility to almost nothing. You'll get driving snow, blasting wind, and it can create a whiteout, and that's really dangerous to be out in, especially with the edge of the caldera right here.
There are also hazards such as avalanches and cornices throughout the park. A cornice is a formation of snow created by wind. It often forms over steep slopes and can be overhanging. They can easily be broken through if you're not paying attention.
Most of our popular skiing areas and our popular snowshoeing areas are either on or below avalanche terrain. So you want to be aware of the edges, you want to be aware whether you're above or below avalanche terrain. It's incredibly hazardous, and we do get avalanches all the time here.
Roadway departure fatalities are a serious and often preventable problem in the United States. The Federal Highway Administration reports that 54% of all highway fatalities are caused by drivers leaving their lane of travel. The Oregon Department of Transportation is taking a proactive approach to reduce this kind of tragedy by implementing a centerline and shoulder rumble strip program.
Rumble strips are one of the most low-cost, cost-effective countermeasures that we can apply across the system.
Rumble strips are grooved patterns on the roadway that make a rumbling sound and a physical vibration immediately warning inattentive drivers that they're leaving their driving lane. Rumble strips allow drivers to self-correct and avoid an accident.
About 67% of fatal crashes in Oregon are road departure crashes, which are a vehicle can leave the lane to the right and hit a ditch or a rock or a tree, something like that, or cross over the centerline to the left and get in a head-on collision or a sideswipe meeting type crash.
Over an eight-year period, ODOT engineers studied segments of 16 different highways and concluded that rumble strips are highly effective at reducing lane departures.
We did a before and after crash analysis to find that we have reduced head-on fatalities by 40% with the installation of centerline rumble strips.
We've been trying to find a way to deal with a problem that seems to be increasing over the last 10 or 15 years with our drivers, and that's distracted driving. And there's a lot of things that cause distracted driving. All these distractions are things that make people take their attention away from where it should be.
Comparisons between other available safety features like guardrail and concrete barriers show that shoulder and centerline rumble strips are the most cost-effective safety treatment available.
We're finding that those are very effective in trying to make sure that when you do make that mistake, it's not the last mistake you make. They help bring your attention back to the driving task and bring you back to where you should be, focusing on being in the middle of your lane and being safe.
ODOT makes a conscious effort to use a bike-friendly rumble strip design where possible, and installs 12-foot bike gaps every 48 feet of rumble strip. ODOT understands that rumble strips create a noise that can be disruptive for people who live near rural highways, and we're trying to address these concerns with different approaches.
For the noise, we're looking at some new designs. We're hoping that the new design rumble strip will be just as effective at saving people from making an error, and much quieter, on the order of 10 times as quiet. And we're actually going to be installing our first full set of these style of rumble strips along 205 this summer.
So we recognize that noise is a concern, but one of the things I like to tell people is whenever you hear the sound of a rumble strip, it could be the sound of the life being saved of one of your loved ones.
Rumble strips are proven to save lives. The Oregon Department of Transportation is taking the lead in implementing the Sound of Safety.
The goal of the Mountain Hemlock Phenology Project is to take the pulse of Crater Lake National Park. This project will span several years and track the change in spring tree growth over time. We don't just want to know if the timing of spring at Crater Lake is changing, we want to know why it might be changing, so we will also be measuring snow depth around the trees. This is how you'll take your measurements in the field. First, find a branch on the study tree and focus on the end of the branch. We're only going to measure a section the size of our hand. Next, look for the buds on the branches. They are really tiny. The dried-up tan buds that look like tiny pine cones are pollen cones from last year. Skip over these. You're going to be counting the tiny unopened buds. Early in the season, these will all be tan color. Later in the spring, the cone buds will turn purple and the leaf buds will become hairy. You'll use your data sheet to identify and count the buds. These are the tree's new growth. Make sure you count carefully, the scientists are depending on you. After counting the buds, help the ranger take a snow depth measurement at your study tree. Park scientists think that climate change may be affecting plant growth at Crater Lake. Mountain hemlocks are a tree species adapted to deep snow, and snowfall has been decreasing at Crater Lake. What do you predict? Will trees surrounded by deeper snow produce more or less new growth than trees surrounded by less snow? On behalf of the National Park Service and the global scientific community, thank you for helping us take the pulse of Crater Lake National Park.
I love walking. It's what I do. So who better to share some tips to help keep your walks safe? Wait for the signal. Take in the sights and smells till you get the go-ahead to cross. Use intersections to cross, but when you can't, remember your training. Always look left, right, left. Show you want to cross and wait for all lanes of traffic to stop. And make eye contact so you know the driver sees you. Hi there. Good human. You get a treat when we get home.
How many letters?
Five letters.
Just think about what am I doing right now?
Smile. Smile?
Uh-huh. This is so easy.
Sign that doesn't have a rider on it, so we take our first task at this close to speed.
Bob Weeks and Harley Bills are seeing more than their share of curvy roads these days. Their job is to drive every stretch of highway in Region 1 several times.
The old limits were set back in the 1930s and 40s, and were changed very little until just recently. So now our limits are taking into account newer vehicles, a little bit more aggressive driving style, and so those limits are going up.
And going up in a big way. This is Eric Leeming, a traffic devices engineer with ODOT. He's driving an ordinary car with some extraordinary tech onboard, a GPS device that records data as he maneuvers every curve in the road. Back at his office, Eric can upload the data Back at his office, Eric can upload the data recorded in the car and special software determines exactly the right speed for every curve, every time. Most speeds will increase by 5 to 10 miles per hour, but in some special cases, it's much higher.
The state has a deadline of 2019 from the Federal Highway Administration, but with 8,000 miles of roads to investigate and potentially thousands of signs to change, they're not wasting any time. They're getting out there right now.
Now we're going to the WU-113.
About 800 signs along this section.
That's a lot of signs.
It's a lot of signs. If it's a 35 mile an hour corner, you should be taking it at 35 miles an hour.
America's 3,069 county governments provide fundamental services for building healthy, safe, and vibrant communities. We are an intergovernmental partner, implementing federal and state policies at the local level, often under strict rules and funding constraints. County governments, through the National Association of Counties, engage federal policymakers on a range of issues like transportation, infrastructure, healthcare, public safety, and public lands management. All of these issues are vital to our nation's quality of life and our long-term prosperity. Decisions made by the White House, Congress, and federal courts have a major cascading impact on our ability to lead our communities and pursue a better future. Let's look at why federal policies matter to county government and why county government matters to America. Counties provide vital services that keep our communities thriving and secure. We own and maintain 45% of roads and four out of 10 bridges. We own more than a third of the airports and hundreds of hospitals and thousands of courthouses, jails, 911 call centers, and libraries. We play a critical role during emergencies like hurricanes, floods, and snowstorms. What if you called 911 and no one answered? What if you couldn't reach your medical facility because roads and bridges were in disrepair or never built? County governments are an indispensable part of the infrastructure and services that keep residents safe and connected. But with very limited revenue options under most state constitutions and laws, counties must make every penny count in order to fulfill federal and state mandates and required responsibilities. Nothing is more basic in our society than essential public facilities like schools, hospitals, airports, jails, bridges, and other infrastructure. Yet proposals have surfaced to eliminate or scale back tax-exempt municipal bonds. For over a century, municipal bonds have been the lifeblood for our nation's public infrastructure, helping finance more than $3.7 trillion in essential projects. If tax-exempt municipal bonds were eliminated or scaled back, county governments and our residents would face billions in new costs when financing vital facilities. Additionally, counties rely on MAP-21 and the Federal Highway Trust Fund to complement local transportation financing resources. With growing demands and mounting costs, we need a reliable federal partner to invest with us in our nation's economic growth and competitiveness. We need a long-term legislative solution with increased funding to ensure continued success in operating our nation's transportation system. Counties face further revenue losses each year because billions of dollars in e-commerce sales tax revenue isn't collected. The Marketplace Fairness Act would enable states and localities to collect existing already owed taxes. It would also level the playing field between many internet retailers who don't collect sales taxes and Main Street businesses that do. County governments provide support services to federal public lands, touching 700 million annual visitors. We lead search and rescue operations, fight fires, protect the public's health, and maintain roads. Federal lands cover nearly one-third of the U.S. and impact 69% of counties. Because federal land is exempt from local property taxes, counties depend on PILT, the Payment in Lieu of Taxes Program, to provide essential services. The Secure Rural Schools Program provides assistance to rural counties and school districts affected by the decline in revenue from timber harvests on federal land. Decisions to cut or delay funding both programs undermine our ability to provide services and maintain public lands. Our intergovernmental partnerships don't end with legislation because counties also implement and comply with federal and state regulations. When considering environmental protections, we know our communities and care deeply about the environment. We need a stronger voice in shaping common sense regulations that protect communities while also promoting economic growth. This is why NACO secured significant improvements to FEMA's flood insurance program and is pushing back on the waters of the U.S.-proposed rule. Our message: Federal policies matter to county government and county government matters to America. Every level of government must work together to shape policies that improve the quality of life for all Americans. Whether it's building and maintaining infrastructure, providing essential services, or fostering economic growth, counties are on the front line serving their citizens. NACO stands ready to work with the administration and Congress to make our nation's communities healthier, safer, and more vibrant places to live and work.
Counties matter. Counties serve nearly every American every day. Urban, suburban, and rural, counties work with states, the federal government, and other public and private partners to keep our communities healthy, vibrant, and safe. Whether you're commuting to work or shipping goods around the globe, counties matter. Counties own and maintain 45% of the nation's roads and four out of 10 bridges. And we're involved in nearly a third of public airports and transit systems. Counties matter when Americans need us the most. Counties matter because we support smart, fair, and effective criminal justice systems. We help fund police and sheriff's departments. We own and operate local jails, 911 call centers, and mental health facilities. Counties create healthy communities. We invest more than $80 billion in hospitals and medical services each year. Counties matter because we invest in the lives of residents of all ages, improving their quality of life where they live and work. Counties are the building blocks of state, regional, and national economies. We support housing, recreation, and economic development. And we do so much more. From issuing birth certificates to administering elections, counties employ more than 3.5 million people. In total, we invest more than half a trillion dollars in our residents and our communities every year. Counties provide essential services we all depend on every day. That's why counties matter. Why do counties matter? Simple. Counties provide the services we all depend on. If you're concerned about crime... Get a regular flu shot... Drive to work... Take public transportation... Or experience a natural disaster in your community... Chances are, you benefit from counties.
Do we need to go to executive session first? Would that be best?
Well, we've noticed it for 1 o'clock, and if that's okay. And oh, by the way, for your information, I talked to the roadmaster. He was going to be the item with advice, a legal counsel, had to deal with, issue an enforcement action. He's going to be here at 2 o'clock. He says we can do his thing at any time, so if we're short on time, we might just do the one item on the executive session for now.
Well, I think we'll be fine on time.
Very good. All right.
But he wasn't coming now, was he? Actually?
He'll be here at 2.
Excuse me, I missed that.
All right, so we're going to go into executive session now, and it shouldn't be long, it should probably be more than about 15 or 20 minutes.
Did you get something to read onto the record? Thank you.
You've got one of these?
It's just for you to read into the record. If you could, read it into the record.
Would we close the doors, please?
Well, you can read that in public, so it's... We're still in regular meeting.
Okay, the Curry County Board of Commissioners will now meet in executive session pursuant to ORS 192-6602. B, to consider discipline of an employee if the individual does not request an open meeting, which is misspelled. F, to consider information or records exempt from public laws. H, to confer with counsel on rights and remedies in regard to litigation. If not relating to union bargaining, representatives of the news media are designated. Staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room, please. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on or otherwise disclose any of the deliberations or anything said about these subjects during the executive sessions, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in the executive session. If we make a decision, it will be made in an open, public meeting at the end of the executive session. We will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room. Okay, and we got to switch the disc out a couple of minutes later. Yeah, I got lamb baskets for...
If yours is the next big idea, and you need the right place to fine-tune it, build it, launch it, if you're only your best when you can play more than you work, if inspiration comes from the outside, you belong in Curry County. The westernmost point of the land you love and the edge between familiar and uncharted. Break the pattern. Be where the airports are as close as the beaches, and industry and recreation never cease to amaze. Dock, dive, and dine in a single day, and never lose your connection. This is the threshold of the West. Live where you can do you and do it well, at the farthest point from ordinary. Curry County: Living on the Edge.
We have these parks which are set up to protect and preserve biodiversity. That's challenging under any circumstances. But it certainly is almost impossible if you don't know what the actual biodiversity is in your park or the area that you're trying to conserve is.
BioBlitz is a celebration of biodiversity. Biodiversity is the variety of life in an area. We don't know how much life and what types of life are here at Crater Lake National Park. The big, obvious things we know about. But a BioBlitz is where we go out and look for a particular type of organism. This year, we're looking for beetles, or the order Coleoptera.
The wealth of biodiversity that are in these parks, 99% of it is something that could fit in your hand.
We can't save what we don't know exists. So if there's a beetle species out there that's very important and we don't know about it, we can't do anything to help it. That is the ultimate goal of the BioBlitz. It's a way that citizens can come here. We have volunteers that are here who are actually giving this information. They're using their time to help the scientists build a greater picture of what kind of beetles are here in this park.
Getting this sort of baseline data of what biodiversity is there not only shows us what's there, which is just intrinsically interesting for its own purpose, but it also begins to set a baseline. And that baseline dataset is what we then can use, and not just scientists, but the general public and those land managers, the stakeholders in that BioBlitz, can use those observations then on into the future to understand if things are changing.
It's not so much about counting number of species, it's more about seeing a fuller picture of the biodiversity. And the biodiversity is the variety of different types of organisms, different types of species.
I do believe that in their past BioBlitzes that they have expanded the number of things they now had recorded from the park, but also confirmed that some of the things that were reported historically are still present. So even if it's not a new discovery for the park, it still creates another piece of data that tells us, yes, that thing still lives here and is still thriving or maybe struggling, but we begin to learn something about it. I think that has an intrinsic value to the park for its long-term future, but it also just has an intrinsic social value. When you ask questions about why do we have these parks, and there's lots of ways to answer that question, but one of them is that the parks are these areas where we go to appreciate the wildlife there. And this is a way of tapping into some of that wildlife at all sorts of different levels. One of the key things besides the biology that's involved in these BioBlitzes is the interaction with the public and the opportunity to educate the public about the biodiversity around them.
The citizen scientists are here working alongside professional scientists, and that allows them not just to connect with science here at the park, but connect with the greater scientific community. It's a real positive thing. We see all ages coming here, and they're just acting like kids out searching for bugs, but they're doing real science at the same time. It's a great connection between this amazing resource and the people that live around it.
One of the things I really appreciate about our entire region is that we embrace who we are, and I think that's what unifies us. Once the timber and fishing industries collapsed, it took us a long time to get back on our feet. People didn't quite grasp the idea that once these jobs left, they weren't going to get other family-wage jobs, and it crippled us.
Things were getting really dire, so we just thought that this was an opportunity to maybe look at that public land a little differently and how it could bring more dollars into our region.
The Wild Rivers Coast is so unique because there are more wild and scenic rivers here than anywhere else in the lower 48 states. The scenic beauty is just amazing. There's so many different places to go, from the national forests down to the protected ocean, and it's just a really special place.
I guess I didn't really know how special it was, though, until I moved away to Portland and came back and saw all the potential here.
We're uncrowded, we're unspoiled, and we're a little difficult to get to, but my God, once you come here, you fall in love.
We just thought if we could pull people to come into this Wild Rivers Coast and stay longer and explore a little farther into our backcountry, there was a lot of opportunities for them to experience.
I think our whole future is at stake here.
I think our whole future is at stake here. This area is ready to go. We just need to give it a little kick in the butt.
I'm going to be honest. When the Rural Tourism Studio came here, I was skeptical because I didn't see far enough ahead that we actually could collaborate regionally. And I'm pleasantly surprised. It's been amazing.
The Rural Tourism Studios was the first time we were able to come together as a region to talk about the future of our economy.
If we can have a strong tourism economy in this area, it's going to benefit the whole community.
We have to rely on ourselves. And I think through this program, it's sort of opened our eyes to what we could do when we work together. Community leaders really focused on three areas: outdoor recreation, food and agricultural tourism, and really building community relationships.
In our area, a lot of the food that's grown all gets shipped away. And so now, we're realizing that we can capture some of that local food that's grown here. The Eat Fresh and Local Action Team has hosted a series of networking events, bringing together the area growers with the area vendors so that we could have more local food available to the visitors to our area. And now, we're seeing more local food in our grocery stores, in our restaurants, and we have a new local food co-op.
We created a farm trail from Bandon to Port Orford. We did nine U-Pic farms. And it just gained traction and people loved it.
Langloes is less than 500 people. It's very small. So we have to bring in tourists. And being on the farm trail, even though it's just beginning, has really helped do that. We really want to make it a destination for anybody. My mom and I began Dragonfly Farm just three years ago. When I found out that I could grow a seed and turn that into food, it was like, oh, my gosh, why wouldn't you do this? I just quit my day job and I just signed the paper to be an official co-owner of the farm. This is what I want to do for the rest of my life and grow with the community.
Out of the Outdoor Recreation Action Team, we came up with a series of maps that show where the best places to go recreate are. We know where we're going to send people now. And we got a great map that shows all the best places to go see.
For us to get a mapping project done to this extent is pretty impressive. We're patting ourselves on the back. I don't know what anybody else is, but we're doing it.
From that, we decided that there was some places that needed help. So we came up with a mountain bike plan. And we also worked on designating a state scenic bikeway. The Outdoor Recreation Action Team was also looking at how we can make scuba diving better in this area. So we came up with the idea for a scuba fill station. So now, people that want to come and dive in this area, they can dive for multiple days because they can get their tanks filled up again. When I started the Rural Tourism Studio, my business, South Coast Tours, was really small. And now, we've grown to about five or six guides. And we're doing tours all over from Brookings all the way up to Coos Bay.
Overall, tourism is on the rise here. We've had a bang last two years. And it's like a breath of fresh air down here.
My hope for the area is that we still keep that sense of place.
Loving a place to death is a big concern that I have. And it's a balance. We're going to promote tourism, but we want to do it in a sustainable way. One of the biggest reasons that this area has been so successful since the Tourism Studio is the people that are involved. We have a lot of great, motivated, smart people who understand the need to promote tourism in the right way. And it's really all about the people.
When you live in a rural community like we do, from Bandon down to Brookings, and you're strapped for cash, relationships are crucial.
As a community, I think you need to come together and find out what your mission and goals are collectively. Then you can work into smaller groups knowing that you have the backing of the whole community behind you.
As long as everybody's just super excited about it and passionate about what they're doing and they can work together, then anything's possible.
Own what you have and don't try to be something that you're not. It's going to be hard. It's going to take a long time. So roll up your sleeves and just dig in with an open mind.
National parks are one of America's crowning achievements. After all, it was in this country that the idea of setting areas aside for preservation was born. They are a symbol of democracy and exist as places where one can appreciate the beauty and complexity of the natural world free of human influence. In the past, national parks faced challenges brought on primarily by the industries and practices that threatened them. Today, similar challenges persist as well as some new ones. High up in the Cascades, Crater Lake National Park remains a pristine natural area enjoyed by visitors from throughout the world. But in recent years, new circumstances have come to endanger the ecosystem of the park. Invasive plant species are beginning to spread and threaten the park's natural biodiversity. An invasive species is an organism that did not originate in an ecosystem and is often introduced by humans. In recent years, Crater Lake National Park biologists have documented a rise in the number of non-native plant species found within the park. Invasive plant species have various ways spreading throughout Crater Lake National Park. Roads that have been built create pathways for seeds that may stick on tires and get thrown to the side of the road. From the roadways, visitors come from far and wide to see one of the world's natural wonders. With each visitor, the risk of introducing new species also increases. Many invasive plant species have evolved sophisticated methods of distribution through the development of various adaptations to their seeds. These adaptations allow some species to let the wind and even animal life do all the heavy lifting for them. As seeds needle their way through clothing and animal fur, they are carried and then dropped in various places around the park. There are many reasons why new species are entering the park at an increasing rate. One of the factors responsible are the effects brought on by climate change. Due to warming winters, the snow-dominated season of Crater Lake National Park is becoming shorter. Snowpack, that is normally around for most of the year, shortens the period of humid impacts, such as high levels of summer visitation and infrastructure maintenance and enhancements. With climate change increasing the frequency and severity of drought and lengthening the snow-free period, the factors that are disturbing the natural environment are amplifying. Snow melt, that would linger for most of the year, is melting much sooner than usual. Snowpack acts as a barrier to both plant and animal species. Native plant species have adapted to this environment and are used to completing their life cycles during short growing seasons. With the lengthening of growing seasons, native plant species are now vulnerable to increasing competition from invasive plant species. The risk of forest fires increases with rising temperatures as well. As growing seasons lengthen, so do fire seasons. Areas affected by forest fires open up new habitats for invasive plants to move in, creating areas where non-native plants can find solid footing in the competition against their native neighbors. Newly introduced annual grasses fill spaces of forests and meadows and act as a medium for fires, allowing them to spread farther and more easily than before. This means that not only are invasive plant species altering the existing environment, they create a domino effect that can speed up the process of change in the park. In the last three years, 25 non-native plant species have been discovered. With every coming season, these numbers are expected to increase. Amid growing challenges and limited resources, the invasive vegetation management team has been forced to prioritize the most aggressive species in the park. These Crater Lake National Park biologists are controlling non-native thistles from a remote area inside the western boundary of the park. These thistles were discovered late in the season. And park biologists are removing the seed heads so they will not spread farther and establish more infestation sites. Given how large an area these plants can envelop, controlling invasive plants can be a meticulous process. But it is the best way to ensure that these plants aren't able to spread further into the park. Road sides are another area of focus as they create literal highways for invasive plant species to take hold. By controlling invasive plants near the park boundary and along road sides, park biologists hope to reduce the amount of species entering and spreading in order to protect and maintain the natural state of the park.
What draws you to the Oregon coast? Is it the green and blue surf on a brilliant sunny day? Or angry, boiling waves during a raging winter storm? Do you prefer quiet coves or powerful breakers churning the sand? How about sand castles? Do you come for the rising tide or the setting sun to marvel at whales gliding through the sea or flying in the sky? Reasons to travel the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are as far-reaching as your imagination. This is a spectacular part of Oregon that traces the entire coastline along Highway 101, guiding you to the sea and away again to coastal towns, big and small, lowland marshes, and breathtaking overlooks. It's a long byway stretching from the mouth of the Columbia River to the California border, 363 miles in all, of some of the most unblemished, awe-inspiring seascapes you'll find anywhere. In addition to its designation as a scenic byway, Highway 101 in Oregon also has been selected as an all-American road. That means when you come here, you will experience one of only 31 roads considered to be the best of the best in America.
You know, when people come to the Oregon coast, they're really astonished how beautiful it is. And what separates it from many of the other places in North America that are coastal is how undeveloped it is. And that's because Oregon had a very far-sided land use program back in the 1970s. We have all these wonderful state parks along the scenic byway that are perfect places to stop and enjoy nature in a relatively unspoiled way.
From the north, you begin in Astoria, the first permanent European settlement in the Pacific Northwest. It's a genuine maritime community with ship traffic from around the world seeking harbor up the Columbia. The official State Maritime Museum of Oregon sits here on the river. Beautiful Victorian houses dot the hillside. And standing 600 feet above sea level is the 125-foot Astoria Column. It features a hand-painted spiral frieze that would stretch over 500 feet if unwound. Heading south, you'll find the community of Seaside, a popular vacation spot that offers miles of public beaches, an oceanfront promenade, and a downtown core packed with restaurants, shops, and even a beach-type arcade. Cannon Beach is home to one of Oregon's most photographed natural wonders, Haystack Rock. Get your shots from the beach or take a short drive up to Ecola State Park and look down on this 235-foot work of art. The picturesque, small town is filled with art galleries, shops, and cafes. Ready for more? 10 miles to the south, this is the view from Cape Falcon. You're 700 feet above the Pacific. Here, the Pacific Coast Byway has been carved out of Nea County Mountain and held in place by stone walls built in the 1930s by craftsmen in the Civilian Conservation Corps. Upon descending the mountain, the highway drifts inward around Tillamook Bay to Tillamook, the unofficial dairy capital of Oregon. The verdant valley of dairy farms in this area produces 25 million gallons of milk annually. Much of that is processed into natural cheddar cheese. And near more than 800 miles of navigable waters, Tillamook is a crossroads for North Coast recreation. From here, you owe it to yourself to veer off Highway 101 to explore the Three Cape Scenic Loop. This drive places you right at the beach, beginning with Cape Mirs, home to the shortest lighthouse in Oregon. Nine lighthouses stand sentinel along Oregon's coastline. They're monuments to our maritime heritage, towering links to the past and as much a part of the rugged Oregon coastal landscape as any offshore monolith. The Cape Mirs Lighthouse was first illuminated in 1890. Oregon's oldest lighthouse is at Cape Blanco, the westernmost point in the state. It was commissioned in 1870 to aid shipping generated by gold mining and the lumber industry. The 93-foot-high Yaquena Head Lighthouse is the tallest in Oregon. Today, its automated light continues to aid navigation at the entrance to Yaquena Bay. Many of the lighthouses are open to the public. Most happen to be excellent places to view nesting seabirds and offshore sea life. Tide pools, those rocky areas between high and low tides, support unique and diverse plants and animals. Vast amounts of colorful, otherworldly creatures wait to be discovered. But while cautiously, these organisms are tough enough to withstand the pounding surf but are utterly vulnerable to human activity. Wildlife and sea life abound on the coast.
There are six national wildlife refuges along the Oregon coast. The Pacific Coast Scenic Byway bisects these refuges or goes alongside them. It provides you the opportunity It provides you the opportunity to see a wide variety of abundant wildlife, including seabirds, seals and sea lions, deer and elk, and many other wildlife.
Cape Kewanda lies at the southern end of the Three Cape Scenic Loop, near the town of Pacific City. Here, you'll find a second Haystack Rock on the byway. Hike up the dune to marvel at stunning views of sandstone formations as they turn yellow, gold, or even red in the changing sunlight. If your timing is right, you'll spot one or two of the Dory fleet sprint onto the beach after a day of fishing. How's this for a dinner setting? Restaurants along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway accommodate just about any taste. Many serve an ocean view with every meal. Up and down the coast, you'll find seafood, of course, but don't limit yourself just because you're by the water. The central coast begins around Lincoln City, which is one of the larger communities on the byway. It has a reputation for being windy and was recognized by Kite Lines Magazine as the best place to fly a kite in North America. It was incorporated from several small towns, and as a result, offers a sandy beach that is seven-and-a-half miles long. A number of small state parks lie nestled along the ocean between Lincoln City and Newport. Stop, get out of your car, and take in the commanding views that are there, right next to your All-American Road. Depot Bay boasts the world's smallest navigable harbor, six square acres in all. A seawall runs the length of the downtown, so everywhere you go, you're rewarded with a dramatic view of the Pacific. It's considered Oregon's whale-watching capital, with thousands making their way past Oregon each fall and spring. Fishing and whale-watching excursions regularly set sail from this little harbor. Leaving Depot Bay, you'll soon find yourself at Cape Falweather, a basalt outcropping that looms five-hundred feet above the water. It was here, in seventeen-seventy-eight, British Captain James Cook first sighted the mainland of North America on the Pacific coast. A fierce storm that almost put an end to his expedition burned this rugged stretch of coastline its name. Coastal weather can change by the hour. You will find a lot of wet days, but rain can become blue sky with white clouds in an afternoon. Mist kissing the headlands burns away, or storms can last for days. Some people come for those storms. Whether you find sunbursts of happiness or cloud cover like a quilt, there's always a reason to come back. Like Lincoln City, Newport is one of the larger towns on the byway. The historic bayfront on the north side of Yaquena Bay hosts one of Oregon's largest commercial fishing fleets. It has a busy, genuine working waterfront field, with fish plants and boats coming and going from as far away as Alaska. On the south side of the bay is the Oregon Coast Aquarium. Share waters beneath the ocean with sharks and rays. And don't miss the sea otters at mealtime. For the next fifty miles, your trip along Highway 101 hugs the coast. Many more state parks offer opportunities to stop and take in outstanding vistas, crashing waves, and offshore rock formations. Two small towns of note are Waldport and Yaha.
Oh, come on.
I guess that I got a little thicker skin than that, so you're not gonna get me that easy.
There's just a lot of spinning that goes, come on.
Okay. Are we back in normal meeting?
Yes, sir.
I'm just waiting for JJ. Slow poke over here.
There we go.
All right, we are back in session for our regular session. It is one-thirty-one on February twentieth in the afternoon. And leaving our executive session, I'm advising County Administrator Julie Schmelzer to proceed as directed from the Executive Session Board.
Sure, is there a motion to that effect?
I make that motion.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Just clarification, Director of Operations.
Thank you. All right. Yeah, there's no deliberation on this, just a straight vote? Roll call vote, TJ?
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Yes.
Chair Pash.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we're gonna move on to Director's Report. You know what I saw? I was looking at that already, and I saw Administrator Administration there. That's why I said it.
And some of the other stuff we had in front of us. So I just wanna give a little update on the administration side or Commissioner's office side of things. As you're aware, we have, for the most part, completed our relocation process. We do have some work to do with the CCH office yet. I obviously have to unpack and clean things in my area, but...
I was hoping you were gonna say that.
I haven't heard, I was not here, of course, during the actual relocation, but I've...
Oh, are you on the mic?
But I have heard that things went fairly well, so that's, that's good. We have discussed a meeting schedule at a workshop that was actually emailed out to you either late last night or early today. The meeting schedule is flexible. I don't wanna say flexible, I mean, we wanna try and stick with that schedule as best we can, but if there are issues that arise, such as schedules, or somebody has a night meeting when we have a meeting scheduled or something, it's something we should discuss as we go along, but for the most part, let's just try and stick to that schedule. Also, delivered a liaison list to the department heads with copy to the commissioners, updated that this morning as well, there was one change on there. So that should help as we move forward, that department heads know who their liaison is and who they should be working with, and then also so the commissioners know who their department is or what organization they're affiliated with, to kinda keep us all focused and working together so we're not crossing paths on stuff. As far as the community development side of things go, the planning director has been downstairs for little over a month now, about a month and a half. There's a substantial amount of work down there. She's really doing a great job as far as I'm concerned. She did need some help, and we approved that today to have John hit come down there and help. We also have two other people working part-time down there to try and help her get things arranged, but hopefully by midsummer, we've got things trucking along that we can reevaluate that and see with the budget, you know, do we need a full-time person down there, or can we continue on with part-time people?
Can I just ask one little question relative to that? I, I've heard that there is a great need to get all of those records on the computer. Is she working on that, or...
Okay, so that was...
Is that your idea?
Yeah, that, that was a proposal that I had, Commissioner. I don't think that the planning director will have the time to dedicate to that.
Not just her, but I mean, even get someone from the outside to come in and, and do it, maybe a consultant or something, because it would be so much more efficient to have it that way.
Right, I agree with you. So my goal is to have those records all scanned and in electronic format, then to actually have a public computer station downstairs where somebody can come in and sit there and pull up these files, or somebody does a public records request, we can answer it electronically versus having to go through a lengthy process trying to find the file, and is there another file in a different room, things of that nature. That we do have to put out for an RFP, because I do expect that to be more than ten thousand dollars, and then also have to find grant work for it. But I've also talked to some of the staff downstairs about whether or not they would be able to make the time to pull apart the files. So when you do those electronically, you can just take the boxes and give it to the company, or you can have somebody go through and pull out the staples and make sure there's no sticky notes or anything in there, and that keeps our costs down on the end. So that is the route that I've been discussing with some of the staff down there. So with, as far as the building safety side of things go, we still do not have a full-time building official. HR just ran that advertisement, I believe, yesterday or today. My goal is to hopefully find a building official that has all of the certifications that we need, so we don't have to pay multiple people to do inspections. Until such time as until we're to that point, we're just gonna have to keep going with the assistance that's been offered to us. We have former employee that you approved this morning that'll come back and help on some matters. Don Sigvartson was a former employee who stays on, has come back and says, does some work for us, and then Dave Bassett also, we have an agreement with him to provide some of those services as well. And Brookings helps us with some things as well. But it would be nice to actually get to the point where we have a full-time building official or some arrangement worked out where we don't have to be having all these various contracts. And it'd make it easier, better customer service for the contractors. They know exactly when they can expect somebody in the office for inspections in the field, and I believe that would also help with the revenue sources as well in that department.
Could I, even though we, it seemed like, if I'm not mistaken, Commissioner Boyce was instrumental in getting that other employee to come back to keep that place functioning, isn't that the case? Anyway, I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure credit was given where credit's due, so...
Well, thank you. I, I couldn't, you know, you're supposed to say a team effort.
Yeah.
What it really was. I mean, there's just no question about it. And I, I, I'll just add real quick, you know, just the seven or eight meetings we've had since January seventh, it's just, it truly is a new day, and seeing you, I'll save the compliments, but it's just been great to work with you, absolutely, Dave.
Well, I've been staying for a while, so thank you. From the economic development side of things, we do have, our economic development coordinator is scheduled to start tomorrow. She still will be helping out in her previous department to help with the transition on some things. We do not wanna leave, she came from the juvenile department, so we do not wanna leave them without assistance, so she'll, although she effectively starts around economic development, I have authorized her to continue to go back and help and train with the new employee, so we're not left shorthanded in that department as well. And then finally, just note that in the surveyor's office, we are looking for a part-time person down there. We have, Julie Swift has advertised to the schools in the past for that position. I've talked to the economic development coordinator to see if, maybe she could reach out as well to see if perhaps there's some arrangement with the school where we could try and get people interested in learning the surveying skills, so that we have surveyors here, or at least a training program to keep people going, so we don't have to continually look for assistance down there. I also have concerns that we don't have a backup plan for the surveyor, should he decide to retire or something happened to him. So I'd like us to get to the point where we actually have succession planning on all of these departments, if we can.
So we have two part-time surveyors down there. Did something happen that I'm unaware of that...
He just resigned. The surveyor notified us this week that he has resigned, and we're gonna have to find a new part-time person.
Riley Smith.
Riley Smith notified us that the part-time...
God, I'm sorry, thank you.
Guy from Brookings?
I was about to fall out of my chair. So, but we still have one part-time, and that's why you're looking, I, I follow, thank
Has Julie actually talked to, say, the superintendents of schools to, to make
you.
sure that that gets out to the schools rather than just an advertisement in the newspaper?
I do not know that, Commissioner Gold, but the economic development coordinator has said she's gonna, one thing we have talked about is the fact that having perhaps like a youth partnership program where we help children get skill set and get them into jobs.
I'm thinking job shadowing, possibly.
We don't have that right now in the county, other than, you know, a foundation that perhaps trains youth, or maybe through an individual school. So one of the things that I would hope we can get to when we do our economic development strategic plan is the fact that we can actually have a path for these children, and it is something that we're doing countywide.
So as a liaison to the schools, would you like me to contact the superintendents individually and just tell them there may be an opportunity for a student to do some job shadowing with the surveyor, and then possibly come up with a part-time job during the summer or whatever?
I think that's a great idea. I think we should wait until tomorrow and sit down with the economic development coordinator.
Okay, that's fine.
And then work, you could work directly with her on that.
Okay.
Good idea.
Let's get with code enforcement and all that as well.
Pardon me?
You can get involved in that, code enforcement and everything.
Yes, and then just a little update on the code enforcement side of things in our office. Mr. Fortman is doing great. He has over seventy cases right now, I believe fifty of them are active or that he's working on. Saw another one that was delivered to him yesterday, so he's doing a really good job.
So just let me know about job shadowing?
Sure.
As far as the superintendents, and if you have other areas you want job shadowing in, let me know.
Julie, if, if I could, one specific, I was with Director Schmelzer when Mr. Fortman talked to us about his code enforcement caseload, but one of the particular properties was down, I think, on Ocean View Drive, south of Harbor, and it was a burned-out property. Before he came along, I was involved, John Hit was involved, in a lengthy court process to get court orders to get to the point where we would get a house demolished and, and ready. On that one on Ocean View Drive, he said that it's been demolished and they're ready for permits, so very...
Good news.
Yeah, exactly. I thought it's just a great use of county resources, and again, that, it's done quickly without a lot of legal hassle, so I think that's a nice story for him to, to report, for Julie to report there.
Well, and I've heard some good comments from some of the neighbors that have been involved in the messes around, so...
And on that note, I would like to say we are downsizing our motor pool, as you know, and we are looking for a vehicle for code enforcement in the surveyor's office to share. A four-by-four, they need a four-by-four to get out in more rural areas. If we can find him a four-by-four, I've spoken with him, because we do have an issue with some pets in, in the county that we've heard several complaints about, and our sheriff really doesn't wanna get involved in. Well, it actually, it actually is a code enforcement issue with licensing and a lot of that, and I've talked to Mr. Fortman, and he said he would love to be involved in that as well. So I think by summer, we're probably going to need a second code enforcement officer, but he is excited to get involved in that program as well. So for those out there that are, that have complaints about pets, you know, he, he will be someone that down the road, hopefully, we'll be able to look to, to solve a lot of those issues. Commissioner Boyce.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Pet says in danger?
Yes.
Thank you. Does that also include a vehicle for, not for, but for VSO officer bounty?
Yes, that's all done, that's getting done too.
Thank you. That's all I have for now.
Okay.
Were you still reporting?
Yes, she was.
I was just gonna conclude by saying, as with that vehicle for Mr. Fortman, we're gonna have to look at budgeting for a radio for him to...
It's gonna come with a radio in it.
Okay, because he does get to some pretty remote places, and I wanna make sure he's safe in that.
Yeah, we'll have a sheriff's radio built right into it when we order it.
Would they...
I just was watching, and we were talking about the surveyor position. I did, last time we were out, I did send it to the superintendent, or I did send it to the school districts at Gold Beach and at Brookings. Haven't done that yet, but I did forward the ad to Summer Madison with her economic development partnerships with the schools. I also posted it on the board at SWAC last time. We just didn't get a lot of interest. It's very, very difficult to...
Commissioner Gold?
Let me just say one thing about posting ads. It's, it's great, but not everybody reads those ads. If someone is contacted personally, like if, say, a superintendent or one of the teachers knows an individual student that would fit into that niche...
Well, and I think last time, in fact, during the summer, Janelle Howard's son, who works for the city of Brookings, worked for Riley temporarily, because she knew the position, I had sent it to her, and so she...
I think it might be good, as schools used to have assemblies every now and then, they'd have an assembly in one of their big auditoriums.
Yeah, they have career days.
And perhaps maybe having one of us go there and say, this is what we'd like to, you know, as anyone in the audience, you know, maybe let the principal know that we'd like to do a small presentation at these schools and say, hey, is there any kids out there that would like to get involved in surveying, or, you know, whatever, and present it to an assembly, you might get some hands get raised.
Well, and actually, I think, rather than just superintendents, a better contact would be the principals, like the high school principals. That would be a, a much better contact.
Okay. All right, so Commissioner...
Other source, Southern Oregon Workers Investment Board has funding, Jake McClellan, Kyle Stevens, they might have some avenues there. Also, very happy to hear you're on board with a, and thinking we can, hopefully, we can budget for another code enforcement officer, and I have a resume that I can get you from Port Orford, so I'm, that's very good news to me also, Mr. Chair, thank you.
So why don't we segue right into your, into your comments?
You got your stopwatch?
I do. You're on. Three minutes, twelve seconds.
Schedule, I will be tomorrow morning at Couscure Douglas Business Development. That will be about a two-hour board meeting, then I'm gonna hustle over to Roseburg, which is the quarterly meeting of Southwest Oregon Workers Investment Board. And then I have an AOC meeting that's very important, Salem on Friday, and that's gonna be three and a half hours. And then I have the last one, which is very important also, is back in Springfield, I think it's two o'clock on Friday, and that is for carbon reduction, the whole state of Oregon, how that can affect rural counties. And you know, and we do, when we follow the legislative process, it doesn't necessarily bring funds back to the county. That's gotta be our number-one goal, to how we can compete and overcome on that. But this is a, this is a bill alert, bad bill alert, from Representative David Brock Smith on rent controls. Horrible news. With the shortage of housing we have, the rent controls taking the incentive from people that do want to have rentals available, to, to lower-income folks, to even middle-class, this just about does it in. I'd love to speak on this a little bit, the information I have, but I just encourage anyone to, if they need this, to contact me, and I'll make sure that they get the basis of this bill, because it doesn't help, it does not help anyone. Also, with Council Huddle and Director Schmelzer, I'm gonna be promoting to the board, I think we need to guard their time a little bit, people need to, this is just my opinion, I've not talked to either one about the, to either one of them about this. Council Huddle I did about a year ago, and he's, he's accessible, which I appreciate, but their time is very expensive, and it's very valuable, and I think at some point for people just to drop in, I saw your schedule yesterday, which you handled very well, of course, but I was, you know, I left here about six-thirty, I think you left, I don't know, eight-thirty? Hard to say, but she was on major overload, and that's, she signed up for that, certainly no complaining, but I think a more structured approach and, and access to them, something I want the board to please consider down the road. You know, everything else away, ferry hole boat ramp, we need to spend some time on that, we're just about, we got about twelve minutes for Christian, Roadmaster Christians to get here. One issue that, you know, I'll come back to the fires real quick here. Insurance claims in California from the fires they had just for two thousand... Insurance claims in California from the fires they had just for 2018, 11.4 billion. As you know, that's $11,400 million. And so I just keep as respectfully as I can sounding the alarm for Oregon. And I, I don't want that here, and I'd love to be wrong, that we're not as, as great a risk as, as I fear that we are. And then you heard the sheriff, this is my last thing, Mr. Chair, you heard the sheriff's deputy the other day report, actually the captain, the level of responsibility that they have. I was just talking to Curry Community Health CEO Ken Dukey about the county being subjected to whatever those issues are in the Oregon Health Authority on these folks that, you know, become incarcerated eventually, you know, as they, as they do go into jail. The Oregon Health Authority walks away, and we're left with a bill. I could tell you a story, maybe another time, what happened in Douglas County. Here's 125,000, come right out of our budget. I won't give you specifics. I don't think I'm authorized to do that. But it's a for-real payment that the Curry County taxpayers had to make. And the losses continue to pile up. And I'm gonna be able to count on you to help me identify these and correct them to the very best of our ability. That's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Gold?
I think I'm gonna fork all my comments for today in the...
Okay.
Interest of brevity here.
I have just a few comments. First, I think we just spoke on the code enforcement. We are downsizing the motor pool. We're going to be selling off a lot of the old cars. Downsizing the amount of cars that we have, and the county employees that use the vehicles are gonna have to learn to share. We're actually gonna put a calendar up, and people can reserve cars for the future. We will, we still have not completed, but we will be tightening in on the travel policies and the filling out of the paperwork and all that stuff has yet to be done. But we are working forward on that. I want to commend Steve Barland on something in this pack of papers I have here. You may or may not know, but I will be at the NACO meetings in Washington between the 1st and the 6th of March.
Make sure everybody knows what that stands for.
North... National Association of Oregon.
But no, that's good for the public to know that.
Thanks for putting me on the spot there.
Okay, sorry.
Anyway, I will be there for the meetings. We will be in front of a lot of senators and Congress during that time. I'm scheduled already, I think, for 13 or 14 meetings between Saturday morning and Tuesday. We're even working 14 hours on Sunday. I will be presenting to Merkley and Wyden this Rogue River Fishery Recovery Issue that Steve Barland brought to the board a few weeks ago that we approved to move forward. The numbers are staggering on this, the amount of detriment to the, to the Rogue River and, and the loss of fish. Tourism, local businesses and everything is, is amazing. I know people say, well, gee, you're, you're probably asking, you're shooting for the moon to ask for the kind of money. Just so you know, the ROA on this Elk Creek, I think it was, and I'm not certain on this, they, they got $288 million, I think it was, to recover from damage done on another dam. So this isn't, these, these aren't crazy numbers, and, and they're gonna have to deal with it. These are contract violations that, that the, that the Corps had with, with, with the county and with the state that they, they basically abandoned. And we've also got some issues with fire and smoke that we're going to be meeting with some congressmen about, congresspeople about asking for some money for abatement procedures for local businesses that lost money for some of the smoke damage that occurred in Curry County over the last few years. So we do have a very busy schedule there. I'm just, I'm thrilled to be part of it. And this is in association with the AOC. And I'll promise you one thing, I'll get your results when I get back. But like I've said before, I'm not afraid to knock loudly on the doors and ask. And I will be asking that the federal government realize that rural Oregon needs help. They've taken so much from us, they don't offer very much to us anymore. Rural Oregon needs to survive, and there's only one way, and that's somebody's gotta reach their hand out and help us. We can't just do it all. So I will be there and do all we can, and that's all I have.
Mr. Chair?
Not quite. This is the ordinance for advisory votes.
Okay, thanks. So at your places is being passed around the emergency ordinance to be adopted by unanimous vote. At a single reading, I'll read it. It's really short and sweet. This is a matter of an amendment to the Curry County Code, authorizing advisory question be placed on the ballot by the Board of Commissioners. The ordinance shall be known as Ordinance Number Blank. We'll fill that in after adoption. Amending the Curry County Code with respect to General Administration, Article 1, Adding Division 20, An Ordinance Authorizing the Board of Commissioners to Place Advisory Questions on the Ballot. And then Exhibit A is the actual text of the article for adoption. Attached here too, Incorporated by Reference is adopted as an amendment and a new Division 20 to Article 1 of the Curry County Code. It has a severance clause saying that if any section, subsection, provision, clause, paragraph of this ordinance shall be adjudged or declared by any court of competent jurisdiction to be unconstitutional or invalid, such judgment shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of the ordinance. It is hereby expressly declared that every other section, subsection, provision, clause, or paragraph that this ordinance enacted irrespective of the enactment or validity of the portion thereof declared to be unconstitutional or invalid is valid. And then it says, "An emergency clause of Board of Commissioners for Curry County deems this ordinance necessary for the immediate preservation and protection of the public peace, health, and safety and general welfare of Curry County, declares an emergency exists, and this ordinance shall be effective on..." And it's essentially adoption today, dated this 20th day of February 2019. It's got signature pages, has the attesting and the approved. And then here's the meat and potatoes, Exhibit A, Section 1, 20.010, title. This ordinance shall be known as An Ordinance Authorizing the Board of Commissioners to Place Advisory Questions on the Ballot. Section 1.20.020, Authorization to Place Advisory Questions. The Board of County Commissioners for Curry County may, upon a majority vote, submit questions on matters of county concern to the voters of Curry County for a non-binding advisory vote at, vote at any general or primary election. And Section 1.20.30, Statutory Compliance. Questions on matter of county concern placed on the ballot for an advisory vote shall comply with all the requirements of Oregon statutes and administrative rules governing elections. And then I just request a motion to approve and adopt and a vote.
Would you come over to my house and speed read the amendments in the ORS to me, please?
Excuse me. As a member of the public, my name is David Barnes. A member of the public, I'm opposed to this action. This, the idea that you needed this just came up at 11:30 this morning, barely two and a half hours ago. The public hasn't had a chance to see this, hasn't had a chance to comment on this, and I'm highly opposed to you taking this action today. I just wanna voice that concern. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The law allows the board to adopt an ordinance by emergency at a single reading, by a majority vote.
I do not believe that this ordinance can, meets the requirements of being in an emergency. How, so that something can be posted in the paper, I don't see that, how that affects the public safety in emergency. I just, as I said, I'm opposed to this. I think this is just, this is bad politics, okay? This isn't governance, this is bad politics.
Really noted, Mr. Chair. Council Huddle sounds like that guy, the gentleman that reads at the House floor. I mean, he reads just a little bit faster than you, not much. Thanks for the work during lunch. I don't know how you...
Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve this ordinance as written.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion?
There is one typo that we'll just have to correct later.
Thank you.
Roll.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Chair Pash?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
So, Mr. Chair, this room was reserved at 2:00 for another meeting. And then we had that one matter of possibly revisiting the executive session material for the Roadmaster. If that's the will of the board, we can adjourn until this meeting is over and come back and hear the executive session with the Roadmaster. Or we can continue that to another meeting at another, are we having a meeting next week?
We are, and I, I would just recommend perhaps we just relay that over. It's not...
Okay. Yeah, it's not time-sensitive. Very good.
It's 2:00. This meeting's adjourned.